Hey Dominic. How you doing?
Good.
I ain't had it, yeah. August. No, my wife said September, October. Yeah, we just know. We just got pictures of the ultrasounds and stuff. So we know it's gonna be a bore.
Nice.
Yeah, so excited. Excited for Calvin.
Yeah.
Everybody up here now? What's up Jim, huh? Thank you all for being here this evening. I will call the meeting for April 23rd, 2012 to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Please press your button, sir.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Moreno.
Here.
Councilman Benson. Councilwoman Carson.
Present.
Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Councilman McAldowney.
Here.
Button, sir. Thank you. Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have the quorum.
Thank you. Let the record show that Mr. Benson is the only one not with us this evening. I would like to remind everybody to turn their cellphones off for the duration of the meeting. And will you please rise and join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now I would ask the staff to pass around the microphone so that the audience can introduce themselves.
Thanks. Pam Sfrattler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Jeanette Lewis.
John Gallagher, Suncor Energy.
Cheryl Scott, Deputy City Clerk.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Ross Sibley, Police Department.
Heidi Flowers, Police Department.
Michelle Harameo, Victim Services.
Robert Romine, Citizen.
Matt Reeder, Spawn, Public Works.
Darren Sterling, City Engineer.
Kirk Webb, Colorado Department of Transportation.
Rebecca White, Colorado Department of Transportation.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Paul Workman, Planning Staff.
Jared Draper, Planning Staff.
Michelle Halsted, Communications.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Brian Garner, Planning.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is our presentations and proclamations. Could I please have the folks that are here with the victim advocates come up to the podium? You want to tell us who you are?
I'm Michelle Harameo, Victim Services with the Police Department.
Heidi Flowers with Victim Services with the Police Department.
Welcome. I have a proclamation that I will read. Whereas 20 million Americans are victims of crime each year, and crime affects more, many more, including families, friends, and communities, and whereas crime exacts an emotional, physical, psychological, and financial tool on victims that has the potential to irrevocably change the course of their lives forever, and whereas victim assistance programs across the country are reaching more victims and criminal justice officials are honoring victims' rights more consistently, public understanding of victims' rights remains minimal, and challenges face our nation's victim services system. And whereas Commerce City has a victim services unit staffed by two full-time employees and eight volunteers, all of whom provide an on-scene incident assistance to crime victims 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the unit served 740 individuals last year primarily responding to domestic violence or sexual assault on children with essential items such as diapers, toiletries, teddy bears, blankets, and clothes, and whereas Commerce City is participating in National Crime Victims Rights Week, helps to raise awareness about the services provided by the unit as well as recruit volunteers to participate in this important program. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council, I hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd, 2012, as National Crime Victims Rights Week, reaffirming the city's commitment to respect rights and addresses their needs throughout the year. What are the desires of council? Mr. McAldowney?
I'd move to accept this proclamation.
Mr. Moreno.
Second the motion.
If a motion is second to accept the proclamation is read, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Will you please join me down front to give the proclamation?
Everyone can look here. That's great. One, two. One more.
Next, I would ask, is Carolyn Keith with us tonight, or someone from Parks and Recreation? Carolyn?
Excuse me, Mr. Ford, before you continue, can we just make note to the record that Mr. Benson has arrived?
Yes, will the record please reflect that Mr. Benson is with us now?
Thank you.
Tell everybody who you are, please.
Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, Carolyn Keith, Director of Parks and Recreation for Commerce City.
Great, I have a proclamation here for you as well. Whereas the city of Commerce City desires to recognize and observe Arbor Day along with others across the nation and throughout the world, and whereas the city of Commerce City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the 21st consecutive year, and whereas the city council and staff wish to promote an interest in the planting of trees in residential areas as well as city-owned parks, trails, and open space, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim that April 28th, 2012, is known as Arbor Day in Commerce City, recognized with a public event at 10:00 a.m. and plantings along the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Trail. Be it further resolved, the city council urges all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees, woodlands, and support the city's community forestry program. Mr. McAldowney?
I'd move to accept the proclamation.
Okay. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
If a motion is second to accept the proclamation, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Join me down front, please. what the event's about and where about?
The city will be celebrating Arbor Day this Saturday, April 28th, at 10:00 a.m. on the Sand Creek Regional Greenway. We'll be doing tree planting at the Wetland area. And we don't have the address here.
Okay. It is at the Dallia, well, you can meet at the Dallia, you can park at the Dallia Trailhead,
but you will then have to walk to the Wetland area. However, if you, I don't know the street name that will take you back into the parking area where you could walk a lot closer into the Wetland. Okay, my apologies. So if you get directions to the UPS Customer Service Center on 5190 Ivy Street in Commerce City, it should take you right to the area where you can easily enter the Wetland area. When you turn onto 52nd, it will say Dead End Ahead, but below that, there should be a sign for the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Trailhead to the Wetlands Park.
Okay.
So again, that's this Saturday, April 28th, 10:00 a.m. at the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Wetland Park area. And again, if you would just refer to the UPS Customer Service Center, you'll get directions that will take you right to that trailhead.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is going to be the citizen communication portion of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes to address the council. First person is John Gallagher. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city staff, I came this evening to provide you with an update on the Sand Creek situation. I've been before you before.
Can I get you to state your name and address for us?
Oh, I'm sorry. John Gallagher with Suncor Energy, 5801 Brighton Boulevard.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
So what I wanted to do was provide the council with an update on Sand Creek. Since we last spoke, we've made some very significant progress in terms of putting together the facilities to protect Sand Creek, protect the environment, and ultimately get back on to Suncor's boundary. So as you know, on November 28th of last year, we had a small amount of material that went into Sand Creek. We secured that, we built an interceptor trench, and what's happened since then is we've built a thousand-foot trenching system on Metro Wastewater's property, and that's, one of the trenches is a blocking wall, essentially blocks all liquid hydrocarbons underground, and the second in front of that is a collector trench, which has a number of sumps in it to take liquid materials out. We have also built on that same property between Sand Creek and that wall, what we call a soil vapor extraction system, where we're taking hydrocarbon vapors out of the soil and burning them in a gasoline engine. And in addition to, so we're 100% complete with the trenching system on Metro's property. The soil vapor extraction units will be completed by April 30th. All of these deadlines within the state's order, and we have 90% of a 2,100-foot trenching system on Suncor's property to protect our boundaries. So if you think about it very simplistically, our overall strategy is to move off of the river, which we've done, move up into the trenching system, and then back on to our own property over the next several months. Now, we still do have trace levels of benzene going into Sand Creek. These are in the parts-per-billion range, and we are working diligently to reduce that, get it back to drinking water quality. And we expect when our permanent systems are fully in play by late summer, early September, we should be seeing some very dramatic results. Right now, we're seeing some results, and we're seeing some improvement, but the permanent systems need to be in play before we're gonna see everything go our way.
Great. Any questions? Yeah, let me see if there, Mr. Moreno.
Mr. Gallagher, thanks for the update. I wanted to reference an article that came out in the Denver Post recently, and it talked about some of the efforts that Suncor is making regarding the bubbling effect, and that allows some of the benzene to escape into the air. Is air quality also something that you're monitoring, just to make sure that those levels don't go above a safe level as well?
Okay, so Dominic, you're talking about the action that we're taking within Sand Creek. So right now, we have air bubblers in the water. We're essentially shutting that system down because we're not feeling it's effective, and the state authorities would agree that it's not giving us the desired result. A second approach that we use that is proving to be effective is water sprays. So essentially, you're spraying water from the creek back into the creek, and as it's contacting water, you're stripping out dissolved benzene. So if you think about it, Suncor's care and concern is really for both the air and the water, but at this stage, you know, it's a bit of a dilemma. We have to make some choices, and if you think about it, the water standard for South Platte River is five parts per billion is drinking water quality standard, and in air, it's 1,000 parts per billion is the occupational safe situation. So we do not believe there is really any risk to the air, but we are waiting for direction from, the state air and water are in, they're trying to decide between them whether we should go larger with the spray, keep the spray we have, or shut down the spray, and we're just waiting for that direction.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else, thank you for the update. Appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'll call Mr. Robert Romine.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, and Staff. My name is Robert Romine, 6760 East 74th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, United States of America. I wish I was here on more happier terms, but this week, I received an email from the Jewish Defamation League about a video that the last mayor and staff had made for a Bronco venue. This was an anti-Semitic video where it showed Ross Huler dressed as a German with a heavy accent pushing screaming fans into an oven to bake him to be Bronco fans. It's hard to think that this video was made on city time with city employees during a workday, and it's been released twice on YouTube in the past six months. YouTube's been contacted, and they banned this video. Every time it pops up, but it comes from an unknown source, so there's no tracing where it came from, but this video, and me not being one to dwell on our past mistakes, we need to find who has the copies of this video, who has issued copies of this video, and we need to have those returned to the city, because this is a very evil thing that was made, and it's ugly, and if this would have been released, if I hadn't have raised my voice about this when it happened, this would have been released, the lawsuits against this city would have been hellacious. So I feel that I've done my job protecting my city, and I just wish it never happened in the first place.
Any one on council have a comment? Mr. Benson?
I remember when this happened, but it happened during the Natal Flannery years.
Indeed.
And those are years that we're trying to forget about.
All of us are trying hard to forget about.
I think that it was a terrible, I don't know what we can do if somebody's got a copy of that YouTube video and they keep putting it on there. I guess YouTube will get it off as soon as they find it, but I don't know. What would you suggest that we do? Because I don't know how you would find out who has it, where it comes from, or how it gets on YouTube. I guess they don't know.
I don't know, but I contacted the Anti-Defamation League, the Jewish Defamation League at the time, who offered me a lawyer at that time, and I told them no, that I was gonna take care of this internally, and I was gonna try to stop it. All my efforts to stop this have failed. I don't know who keeps posting this and why it keeps appearing and why it has become this issue, but it was a bad thing when it happened, and like I say, we shouldn't dwell on the mistakes of our past, but if this keeps surfacing, what do we do about it?
I don't know how anybody could ever have authorized that video, but unfortunately, it's out there.
Indeed.
But thank you, Robert.
Anyone else? Robert, thanks for coming in this evening. I will, I have a few things I wanted to say to you. Of course, you know, it's not this administration didn't put that out, and I'm not gonna belittle the administration prior. I don't, I truly don't believe the intent was to have an ill effect on anybody. However, those videos are out there, they could be downloaded onto anybody's computer. We're not condoning those being posted up for display, but it would be mere impossibility for us to get all those videos off of the computers that people have. I was here when that was released. I appreciate you coming in, and moving forward, if you see this council moving forward in a venue that you think has an ill effect on others with the type of video or something that may harm somebody religiously or ethically, in any way, please bring it to our attention so that we can make some determinations before it gets out there. But I appreciate you coming in this evening with your opinion.
Yes, sir, Mayor Ford, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call Jeanette Lewis.
Do you mind if I put this down?
No, you put it wherever you want.
I'm not quite as tall as the last two gentlemen. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jeanette Lewis. I live at 5680 East 67th Avenue here in Commerce City. Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, Council Ladies, City Manager Protem, our Assistant City Manager, and Mr. Geller, Attorney, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. It is a privilege to see all of you again. I want to talk a little bit about the history of Commerce City or lack of. Around the year 2000, the city of Commerce City's Housing Authority purchased from the city four acres of the Counter property for a senior citizen housing development, complete with an agreement with the city that the original Counter House would be restored and preserved as part of the history of this city. Louise Counter, who was a longtime resident, and along with her husband, farmed the land around 60th and Monaco for many, many years. The original well drilled on the property by TC Kugel was still there, and the basement housed the water retaining tank, which is something you don't see nowadays. The original property contained an old silo and a barn where it was said their horse, tumbleweeds, was buried. Because of the poor condition of the barn, it had to be demolished, and the silo was a health hazard, but the house itself could be restored. Unfortunately, with the turn of a key, in a few short hours, the two-story home and the beautiful hand-carved woodwork around the windows, the amours in the bedrooms, the built-in china cabinets, and the side-arm servers were gone, and so was the rich history, never to be celebrated again. Two weeks ago, members of the Commerce City Historical Society addressed the council and asked you to purchase the black property in the downtown Derby area so the rich history in that area could be preserved. I'm here this evening to ask the council, as you begin to study this request, to please give it your full attention. We can't go back, but in moving forward, you nine individuals can make a difference. When I was a young child, Larmour and Wazee area was off limits to most law-abiding citizens. Nowadays, its rich history has been preserved, buildings restored, and it's a vibrant part of the downtown area. I realize in this down economy, finances are limited, and councils need to budget accordingly and with diligent care. However, this kind of history only comes around once and should remain so that generations to come may celebrate the richness. Arvada, Aurora, Littleton have made the leap, and you as a council have an opportunity to follow. It's time for us to stop the bleeding, to stand up and let people know we're part of this proud city and its rich history. We want others to enjoy the labors of our first settlers and the positive mark they have made. And before I close tonight, I do want to take a minute off the subject to congratulate Councilman Teeter and Councilwoman Elliott. I've watched both of you, and I've appreciated. I've watched both of you, and I've appreciated the fact that you are listening and learning quietly, drinking in the needed information you need before you make public statements. Councilman Elliott, thank you so much. During the last council meeting, you spoke quite eloquently and professionally. Your wisdom is quite refreshing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any comments, Mr. Benson? Did you have a comment? Your light is on?
That was from the last matter.
Seeing none, I would say, Jeanette, thank you very much for coming in. It's nice to see you again as well.
Thank you. And I didn't lose my voice, even with those cottonwoods.
That's good. And I remember the Conter home and the discussions thereof, because I was a council member at the time. Casey Hayes was the mayor, and the house was deemed that it was in a shape that could not be restored. That's why the Conter Community Center was erected, and a lot of the parts within the Conter Community Center and the bricks as part of the Conter Community Center were from both the barn and from the house. But they had deemed it at that time that it couldn't be fully restored. But I do agree with you. We do need to preserve our history, and I know that discussion's coming up later in the agenda to talk about the Black property. So, we appreciate your opinions, and thank you for coming in this evening.
I appreciate your comments, and that'll be another discussion that you and I might have personally. I don't want to embarrass anyone to bring that forward publicly.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I will call Kirk Webb, and I would imagine you want Rebecca to come up with you. Just come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Webb. I'm the Environmental Project Manager for the I-70 East EIS project. We're, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff for letting me announce the public meetings that we'll be having on the project in the first week of May. We will be having the meetings on May 2nd and 3rd. The meeting on May 2nd will be held here in Commerce City in this very building. We wanted to let you know about the communications that we'll be supplying to your constituents in Commerce City. We'll be firing, and we'll have media releases as well as email and other alternative social media announcements. This is the flyer that we'll be passing out. It asks us, the residents, to join us to discuss the revisions to the current alignment alternatives that we have on the table, and also to ask them to concur with the elimination of the realignment alternatives. We've been working on these meetings. We plan to have information on our website, and if there are any questions that I could answer for you this evening, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Webb, not a question, just I received a notice in the mail today, so thank you for what you're doing to get the word out about these meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
I also got a notice today. That's going to be at 7:30 in the morning, is that right?
No, it's in the evening. It's from 5:30 to 8:00.
5:30 to 8:00. All right.
Is that all you have, Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
You say on May 2nd that's going to occur?
That's correct.
So, I didn't get my notice in the, well, I didn't look today, but at 7:00, because there's a few things going on that night, what other days are you going to have this?
We'll be also having a meeting on May 3rd, and that one will be at the Swansia Rec Center in Denver.
And what time will that be?
5:30 to 8:00 as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. We've got copies of the flyers for you here as well, for you to.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
On the May 2nd, we have our celebration for the NEOP, and we also have the Dr. Cog banquet, both and all the times of corresponding. And I just don't understand how everybody looks at everybody else's calendar and says, okay, let's all put it on the same day, because on that day, I don't know how we're going to balance the council out, but I know a lot of RSVP to the other two events already. But May 30, we'll be over at Swansia from 5:30 to 8:00 also. Okay.
Okay. I apologize for the lack of coordination if that occurred, but we were urged to get the meetings out as soon as possible, and this was the soonest we could get them out, and still arrange for locations and logistical items.
Okay. Well, thank you. I know I'll be at the May 3 meeting, but I will.
Excellent. We'll be happy to see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Mr. Douglas, do you have something further?
Yes, I do. Could you explain a little bit about what you're doing here with the meetings, a little synopsis?
Right. These are another set of public meetings that we're having on the project. We've been having these over the course of the project's lifespan over the past eight years. We've reached some milestones. We finished the Preferred Alternative Collaborative Team effort that gathered community members, including community members from your city, in helping us choose a preferred alternative for the project. That effort did not come to a conclusion, but we think we found a way to keep moving forward using some of the decisions that were made by that team. We're presenting these, the revisions that we've made, to the current alignment options, and also be presenting a new alternative that's also on the current alignment. We'll also be asking the public to concur with our decision to eliminate the realignment alternatives.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Webb, and I apologize because I actually won't be able to attend the public meeting. I'll be out of town, but I did want to ask, since the Preferred Alternative Collaborative Group didn't reach a conclusion, who then is responsible for making the decision about how to proceed with I-70?
Our agency, the Department of Transportation, and our federal partners, the FHWA, Federal Highways Administration.
Thank you.
Okay. Were there any of those flyers left, Laura?
Yes.
Would you mind putting those on the back table for any of the residents that are here tonight that would like to pick one up on their way out so that they have it? Thank you. Seeing no one else, I appreciate you coming in this evening. We'll take note of the two meetings, and I'm sure we'll have representation at both, or at least on the 3rd, given the conflicts. Thank you again.
Excellent.
Now, Rebecca, did you have anything further?
No, thank you.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. There are two items on the Consent Agenda. Is there any of the council would like to remove either one of these items from the Consent Agenda this evening? Mr. Moreno?
I'd like to move Resolution 2012-16.
Off of the Consent Agenda?
Off the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Mr. Macaldoney?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And that's the 16, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's take care of the Consent Agenda. Is there any concerns with 2012-15 on the Consent Agenda? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Macaldoney?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda, Resolution 2012-15. Well, the city attorney, please read the title.
I have it. Resolution 2012-15, Resolution Appointing Members to the Liquor Authority Board and Derby Review Board of Commerce City.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, last but a roll call vote.
A roll call vote?
Consent Agenda, roll call vote.
You can do it. We're on the Resolution, there's four.
We got it. All right. My light's not coming up.
My light's not coming.
It's not blinking or nothing. At the record, reflect that the Consent Agenda is approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda will be Resolution 2012-16 on second reading. Resolution modifying the appointments to the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, I had just a question about this resolution. In the staff notes, it had said that we had, under the last ballot initiative that we submitted to the voters, that they'd be staggered terms. I just had a couple of questions regarding commissioner terms. I understand that they're three years, but how the decision was made to actually stagger
I can address that, and perhaps Cheryl can add to what I say here. The members that had the most longevity, the most tenure, were given priority in the selection of the terms. So, the oldest members were given the longer term than in this resolution. The newer members were given the shorter terms.
So, what will the terms be? So, the longer tenured members of the Planning Commission, I'm assuming, got first rights at the three-year term. What are the other terms for the remaining commissioners then?
See, in looking at the resolution, the terms will be, they're three-year terms, and so you have, you notice there, there are two of them, two of the appointed members have terms that expire in 2013, which would be one year. Then you've got two members that expire in 2014, and three members that expire in 2015.
One, two, and three-year terms.
Okay. I was just curious, because a couple of these people have just interviewed, so they will have to come back in a year's time to interview again?
Well, what we've done in the past is that we've offered them reappointment, where they don't have to come back and interview, and we've passed that by resolution in the past. So, that's really up to council how they want to deal with that, if they want to interview those folks, or if they just want to go ahead and reappoint them if they're interested.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions concerning Resolution 2012-16? Seeing none, what are the council's desires concerning the resolution? Mr. Macaldoney?
Move to approve the Resolution 2012-16.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2012-06 on second reading. All those in favor signify.
Title, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
And it's 2012-16 is the number, right. So, the title reads, "Resolution 2012-16, Resolution Modifying the Appointments to the Planning Commission Made in Resolution 2012-06."
Okay, 16.
16.
It, oh, one that says 16 and the other that says 06.
It was a prior resolution. This is modifying that resolution.
If I may speak?
Yes, sir.
We were, we needed to modify the original appointments in Resolution 2012-06, so that is correct.
See, originally, you had a resolution that didn't take into account that ballot title, and so that was Resolution 2012-06. So, this Resolution 2012-16 is, in effect, amending.
Got it.
2012-06.
Got it. Now, yes, sir. Mr. Moreno?
Cheryl, just one more question. I understand that because it was a ballot initiative that we staggered the terms for Planning Commission. Is that a practice we generally observe for other boards and commissions, though, like we said, to not lose the institutional knowledge?
It depends on the rules and regulations of that board and commission.
I can answer, yes. The answer to that is, is that that's the general practice to stagger the terms, and in fact, the Board of Adjustment, as an example, the charter provides for that likewise.
And if I may interject a point as well, part of this issue also is, came about when council came off of Planning Commission, because your terms were basically two-year terms. They followed your organizational meeting. So, when we replaced those with citizen members, part of this is how, that also contributed to the challenge that we found ourselves in with replacing council with citizens, and then with, and then moving alternates to citizen, we had alternates that moved to citizen positions, excuse me, alternates that moved to regular positions, and then with the appointment of new people. So, what happened is we found ourselves with the terms not as staggered as we would have liked, and we found almost half of the board would be gone. So, again, that is why this has been presented to you.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a study item, and first study item is the Denver Black Property in Derby. The April 16 meeting, council directed staff to schedule a study item on the purchase of the Denver Black Property after the Historical Society asked the city to make this purchase when they asked council under citizen communication. Will the staff please come forward and make the presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a quick overview of what you're going to hear tonight. We did hear a request from the Historical Society a couple of weeks ago to do some research, and Mr. Kramer and the Community Development Department has put together a presentation for you tonight. We're going to cover the property information itself specifically. Then, we're also going to review the Derby Master Plan and its zoning that currently exists on the property. Also, we're going to explore what it means to have a historic designation on property or areas of the city, and then finally, some possible alternatives for you to consider. The big policy question that was being asked of you is to decide whether or not to pursue the acquisition of the Denver Black Properties. One piece of information, fortunately, we do not have tonight. We did attempt a couple of times to outreach to the broker. He did not return our calls, but we are confident after tonight, we can still can try to reach him and pursue it if you want to. So, with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're going to have a few of us do different parts of this particular presentation. As Deputy City Manager Hayes mentioned, we have a few different things that we're attempting to cover, all under the umbrella of discussing the Denver Black Property. So, to start off, Mr. Brian Garner is going to talk a little bit about the property in question, and then Paul Workman will discuss historic preservation regulations, and then I'll wrap up with some discussions about alternatives.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the city's Derby liaison, if you will, I'm going to cover, as Chris said, basically the basics on the property itself. Locationally, it's at the southeast of the intersection of East Seventy-second Place and Monaco Street, so that is adjacent to the Derby Diamond. We have, there are two homes that are on the properties that occupy two different lots. I'll have a screenshot here in just a moment for you to take a look at. These homes were built in 1935 and 1953. The actual condition, the inside, structurally speaking, is not known. As Jim mentioned earlier, we did try to reach the listing broker. I think our understanding right now is that the asking price is in the neighborhood of about $250,000. So, as you can see on this aerial view of the property outlined in red, there's the two properties there. The main one on the corner is the older of the two, built in '35, and then the house adjacent to that to the east was built in '53. They're relatively small. The older one is around 800, 900 square feet, and the newer one is a little bit larger, about 1,100 square feet. And then, just for context, the Derby Resource Center is just to the north there, and of course, you can see the Derby Diamond just adjacent to the north and west there. Photo of the properties, these were taken on Friday, so it doesn't get too much more recent than that. So, this is how they look today. Again, the older structure is in that top photo there, is the smaller one, and then the bottom photo is the one built in '53. the, the bottom photo is the one built in 53. We do have a master plan for Derby, as you know, so this will be kind of like a little Derby 101 for you. Through extensive public outreach that was done, starting in 2005, 2006, 2007, the master plan really laid the groundwork for the PUD zoning that followed. The master plan, of course, provides that, the, the policy and direction for any land use decisions that come before you, and of course, it would be considered by staff as well. In that master plan, single-family residential is not really contemplated. It's, of course, contextually speaking, on the perimeter of the downtown district, but, but overall, the district was reserved for retail and commercial uses primarily, with the addition of more dense residential housing above the street level to really support that business district. So, overall, that was what was really contemplated going into this, and as a result of that, that public outreach that was done during that time as well. In particular, there's, there's one block, it's designated as Block Number Three in there. It, I'll show you in the master plan here in the next page here. You can see, again, highlighted in the, the red dash line, that's the Block Number Three there. It's designated for mixed use, so again, that would be like street-level retail or commercial uses with residential above it, and in that particular block, it could go up to, I think it's four or five stories tall in the, according to the master plan. But, overall, you know, the colors kind of tell the picture here. You can see that the vast majority of the, the colors there in the district are, are labeled as red, which is commercial, or the, the orange that's highlighted there, which is mixed use. Residential is shown, like, single-family, low, lower-density residential is shown on this, for context, but that's to the east of Magnolia Street, and that's not included in the, the downtown district boundaries. Okay, so following up with the master plan came the zoning that was reviewed and approved by the City Council in 2007. That's, it's a custom zoning, so again, that really, that took the, the bones of the master plan, that process, and that put, put the zoning to it. We've talked a little bit about the mixed use and commercial land uses at the street level, the residential, and, and specifically where that, the greatest potential lies for that in that Block Three. The zoning, of course, supports the, the efforts of the master plan and, and really calls for high-density housing in certain portions of the, the downtown district. The, more specifically, the Denver Black properties, they're existing, they're considered legal non-conforming, so they can be used exactly how they are today. They can be used as a single-family residence unless they're abandoned for six months or more, in which case, they, they would have to change to the, a more conforming use in line with the, with the zoning and the master plan. With that, I think we're going to turn this over to Paul Workman, who's going to talk to you a little bit about historic preservation efforts.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's good to be here this evening. I've been asked to give a very brief rundown of historic preservation in general, sort of what that means, what some of the impacts may be. Very briefly, historic preservation as a movement began in the mid-20th century, post-World War II, in a response to protect the nation's historic resources. After World War II, there was a lot of new development, particularly the interstate highway system. A lot of historic resources were demolished or removed at that point in time, and motivated group of citizens really put this on the map. It was given teeth, the movement was given teeth in 1966 via the National Historic Preservation Act, and currently, the National Park Administration administers their program. In terms of types of designation, there are a few ways to be designated. Buildings can be designated, structures can be designated, objects can be designated, certain sites, and then districts can be designated as well. Generally speaking, there's three levels of historic designation, a local designation, a state designation, and then a federal designation. Typically, locally, there are dedicated staff resources and a historic preservation board, much like any of the other boards and commissions the city may be familiar with. At the state level, that program is run by the Colorado Historical Society, and the head of that is the State Historic Preservation Officer, who makes nominations on behalf of state or local resources at the federal level to the National Park Service and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Generally speaking, in order to be listed, a structure, or an object, or a district has to be at least 50 years old, and they have to be associated with significant events, significant people. They have to identify some sort of a unique architectural style. There has to be some correlation between a, a tie to history, whether that be locally, at the state level, or at the federal level. There are some certain benefits to historic preservation. At the, at, at the local level here in Commerce City, we currently don't have a historic preservation ordinance in place. However, the, typically, those, those ordinances will provide for reduced fees. That could be any number of fees, whether that's permit review fees, impact fees, things of that nature. And then obviously, there is the local pride that comes with those local resources. At the state and federal level, there are rehab credits that are available, also grants are available, both federal and state levels, and then certainly, there's the recognition at those different levels of those resources and, and that pride. Unfortunately, there certainly are some, some disadvantages to historic preservation. Depending on how a local ordinance is written, it may prohibit the demolition of any or all structures, either the structure or a structure within a district. It can add additional bureaucracy that, that would impede reinvestment and redevelopment. It can discourage new development. It can fragment districts, and it can prohibit a district's renewal. Unfortunately, if, if bureaucracy becomes an impediment to, to development, it can create delays, and there, there's also no immediate protection against demolition for certain structures. If it is listed at a state or federal level, just because it's listed at that level doesn't mean that, that it wouldn't be subject from demolition. So, historic designation can both protect and prohibit the demolition of, of structures, depending on how it's written. At the federal level, again, just because it's listed doesn't mean that it's necessarily protected. Of particular importance at the federal level is any project that has federal funds, notably CDBG funds or transportation funds for things like CDOT improvements or things of that nature, that impact a historic structure or district, are required to go through a special review. It's called the Section 106 review. It's part of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. That can add some, some additional bureaucracy and, and delay projects and things of that nature. And then, any major changes to a structure or a district can removal, can trigger removal from, from that listing. And additionally, if it is listed federally, that doesn't automatically trigger local protections. Again, that would be how the local jurisdiction had drafted their ordinance. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kramer, who will, will conclude our presentation this evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
So, so with the background that we have, it's, it's clear that, that we're, the city's in a little bit of a challenging position. And we have some, some master plans in place that, that big picture really call for a redevelopment effort in Derby. Redevelopment effort that, that the plans really call for some of these properties to be, have new structures on them, and sometimes, to have those new structures, you have to get rid of the old structures. And so, discussing the possibility of a historic preservation district, in some ways, is running counter to that, to what that plan calls for. Further, you know, there's an urban renewal authority plan for the Derby area, which, you know, overall, from a 30,000-foot view, has the same intent. It's really to how can we redevelop specific or general properties within the Derby area. While staff isn't necessar, it's, staff certainly does not want to step on the toes of council in regards to making a decision about purchasing the Denver Black property. With that, staff does want to propose an idea to council regarding how to handle situations like these, not only this one, but moving forward, other properties that become available. You can see a number of other plans that are in place that are helping get, guide decisions made by staff and city council. Part of those plans are what's creating this challenge tonight, because they're in place, they had public input, and they were approved by city council. What staff is proposing is that we do something similar for the Historical Society. Council may remember last year, the Planning Division acted as a de facto consultant to the Housing Authority in a project that, that we have received a tremendous amount of positive feedback from the Housing Authority and the public at large. What we're proposing is to do something similar for the Historical Society, something that lays out what are the criteria of what is, we should be preserving, so that the next time a property becomes available, the Historical Society, city council, staff, we have something to look to to help us guide those decisions, especially in real estate transactions that sometimes need nimble and quick responses. This is the type of thing that, when we did it for the Historical Society, you know, and staff almost acted as a consultant at a great rate. The, the Housing Authority could not have found a consultant as economical as we were. With that said, you know, the, the issue, the benefits of doing this, this way, is that being city council's staff as well, we'll be able to ensure a, a good amount of compatibility with what the city's efforts should be. So, when you look at some of the specifics of what we might be able to do, similar to the Housing Authority plan, we can evaluate what the current situation is, what are historic resources that might even be out there, outline possible strategies and goals, what are the resources that we want to maintain? How widespread are they? And identify those moving forward, so that, that we have a good idea about what it is we want to protect. As Paul mentioned, using federal and state guidelines, that a structure has to be 50 years, or a structure or district has to be 50 years old, and it's got to meet one of those other criteria. Nice archi, you know, historic architecture, somebody important had to have done something there, or some historic event needed to occur there, we can use that as a starting point to get a better handle on what we have within the city. We can help the, the Historical Society identify implementation ideas, or at least identify implementation strategies to pursue, and then we could also help lay the groundwork for future actions, such as the Denver Black purchase. So, that's, that's one idea that, that is coming out of this, that staff would like to propose to city council to consider. If, if that is something city council would like to engage, or have staff engage in, it's certainly something that we could pick up and sort of absorb that workload, beginning sometime in the middle part of the summer. So, with that said, we move on to the, to the, the actual item that was, that started the discussion, which is the actual Denver Black acquisition. There, there's really three big-picture categories here, and I'm sure there's some permutations beyond these three, but, but obviously, one is to not, not really move forward with anything, just sort of keep the status quo. A second alternative is to direct staff to, to engage the Historical Society with this, the strategic plan, and then third would be to move forward with the purchase of the Denver Black property, which would start with finding, finding the available resources within the budget. So, those are really the options before you, and staff will be available for any questions that council may have at this time.
Mr. Moreno, did you have a question?
Yes. I think ideally, in my mind, it, it would be a hybrid of, of two and three. I don't think we, I don't know. I have a couple of questions regarding what was presented. Some resources that were indicated would be available, our state and local, our state and federal grants possibly for historic preservation. Do those have to actually be located within a historic district at the local level, though?
And, and Mr. Workman might be able to help me out, but I, as I understand it, sometimes it could be a specific site, like a cemetery, it could be a district, it could be a structure. Whatever it is, it has to be designated through a historic preservation ordinance or plan, so that you set up criteria ahead of time. Just because I say a structure or a site or a district is historic, doesn't mean it is. You have to go through a process of establishing what, what we call historic is, before you get to suddenly start applying for grants. Once you start applying for grants, you show them, you know, our overall ordinance, our standards, our plan. That then allows us to, to be successful in applying for those grants.
That's, that's correct. And, and just to kind of follow up, generally, those, those tax credits and grants are available after it's been designated by local, federal, state, and then those tax credits are generally used towards the rehabilitation of the structure. Occasionally, they can be used for acquisition, but generally, it's used for actually work being done to the structures. But there are occasions where it can be used for acquisition, but limited.
Thank you. I mean, so, thinking of Derby and, and the structures that are located there, the Black property is one of the few, I think, original historic structures left in Derby. Not many others jump to mind. So, you know, based on criteria of whether or not something historical happened there, I think the reality is that it's one of the few original structures, at least one of them. The, the second one was built later on, but the 1935 property seems like it would qualify for that designation.
Well, I suppose a fourth option, if you will, and this would, this would be sort of in an effort in understanding the context and the condition that we're in with a, with a sale possibly out there. Normally, we would go through in a strategic plan and, and look at the overall criteria citywide and, and set these, you know, these key measures. I guess maybe in this case, what we could do at a staff level is evaluate against, again, since we don't have our own criteria, but we could pick some common criteria that maybe state or federal levels use as a guide or template, evaluate these two properties against those generically. Again, it's not, we don't have our own specific criteria, but, and, and bring back an analysis of that, if, if that would help in making a determination of whether or not these, you know, fit within an overall historic preservation framework.
Well, I guess, I, I do support looking into having some kind of historic preservation ordinance and working with the Historical Society to get that process started, and some kind of strategic plan to identify historic sites in Commerce City and how we plan to preserve them. On the other side, you know, I, I do think in some senses, we're putting the cart before the horse on this particular incident. It is, it is urgent because of the, a possible impending sale of the property, but we don't, there's a couple of challenges I have. One, we don't have a plan in place to really identify what historical structures are in Commerce City and how we plan to preserve them. The other, we don't have a funding mechanism. If we decided to purchase, this property would likely just come out of city general fund dollars. To me, in order for something like this to be sustainable, it would require some kind of funding mechanism, and I know the, the ladies from the Historical Society mentioned a possible ballot initiative to the voters of Commerce City about a, a portion of a, a tax increase, but I just, I, I would like to see us move in the direction of forming a strategic plan, but definitely not roll out purchase of the Black property.
Mr. Benson.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. And I've read most of the material, and I've heard the presentation. I'm still trying to figure out what is unique or significant about this property, except one of them is 76 years old and the other one's 58 years old. What is it about this, this property that, I, I just haven't heard anything so far? Is, is there anything unique or significant, except that it's, it's got two old residences on it?
Are you, are you asking staff?
Well, I'm asking anybody that might know the answer.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Benson, members of council, I think that, that's the big unknown question at this point, is that we haven't done an analysis of these specific properties. We did hear some testimony a couple of weeks ago, that Mr. Black has been a longtime resident, his family settled in this area, they were here before this was a city, those types of things. Those are significant events, clearly, in the history of Commerce City, but these properties, you're right, we're just not sure, because we have not done the analysis at this point.
Because that's the sort of thing that could be commemorated with a plaque on whatever gets built there, but I'm, what, what would you project that a new owner would do with this property? Because obviously, unless somebody thinks that they want to either live there or Because obviously, unless somebody thinks that they want to either live there, or they want to develop the property and make money, what are the uses? I mean, I guess what we want is some multifamily type or high-rise type residential development, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know if I'd use the word "high-rise." It's just a multifamily project with some ground floor commercial. It's a mixed-use block, is what the master plan calls for.
So would that be the highest and best use of that property, in your opinion?
It's what the master plan, it's what the Council approved in the master plan, which is certainly the biggest tool that we're going to use. And, you know, the challenge is, whether the city purchased that property, or some other party purchased that property, it could continue to legally operate as a single-family detached home, as long as somebody continued to live there and there wasn't a six-month vacancy period. Can't enlarge or expand it, but you're allowed to continue to use that property as a residence. But the structure and the use of single-family detached are not consistent with the Derby Master Plan that Council approved. It has specific plans for Block Three, and so the continued use of this as a single-family detached home, and even other uses in that single-family detached structure, are not consistent with the Derby Master Plan. So that's, in some ways, really presenting a pretty big challenge, I think, for all of us.
But why would somebody pay $250,000 to live in one or both of those properties, when they can buy a lot more in other places? It seems to me like the only market for that property is going to be somebody that wants to develop it and make money out of it. That's what drives property sales. I don't see that that's a risk, that somebody else might buy it and move into it and live there. I, I don't. Seems like we could help the owner and the broker with the sale, and find somebody who wants to build multifamily housing there, which is what we want. I guess the property's unoccupied. Is that right?
No.
I think someone's there.
People live there now?
Yeah.
One of the properties, somebody is living, the front property, is being rented out. The back property is right now unoccupied.
How long has it been unoccupied?
Since Ms. Black went into assisted living.
But when was that?
I think it was January.
Okay.
I wasn't there at the time, but I think it was.
I think it was January.
Okay. I would just have a big problem with the city spending $250,000. I hope that nobody would try to get the Northern Infrastructure GID to come up with this, that as a funding mechanism, but I don't see that we need to be spending $250,000 on a piece of property that a private developer would have more business buying. We could help that along. Help a private developer and tell them this is what we want to be built there. They're going to try to be making money, and if building multifamily residential housing is going to be the way to do that, and I don't know what else they could put in there that might make more money than that, that's what they're going to do. It's going to be a money-driven thing, but I can't see us buying up property. We can commemorate the site with a plaque, a big plaque, on whatever is built there. This was the site of the Denver Black Homes, and they were built in 1935, 1953, whatever. But preserving two homes, one 76 and the other one 58 years old, I, I don't know. I would just have a big problem with us spending money on this property.
Mr. Bullock.
I'm not looking at this as a small item ideal. When you look at the Derby District as itself, as being one of the oldest districts in Commerce City, then you're looking at historic preservation. If it's one of the oldest districts in Commerce City, and this is one of the oldest homes in the district, that is what we're trying to preserve. As Ms. Lewis stated when she came up here so eloquently, we've had properties before that have had historical significance in Commerce City, and we let them go by the wayside. Across the street from the old city administration building, there used to be another home that happened to be around about, I think it was maybe 80 or 90 years old, and it was torn down to make way for the Walmart. On 61st and Holly, we have a home that was built in 1892, the same year as the Brown Palace. We have a lot of history in this city that if we decide that we just want to make it a real estate value and somebody make money off of it, instead of preserving something for the future generations of Commerce City, all they'll have in Commerce City to see is pictures or something in a book. Denver made a significant change. Inglewood, Littleton, Westminster, all these cities that surround us made a significant change in preserving the history of their city, so they could show it off to the future generations. It isn't all about money, Jim. I mean, and it isn't all about plaques, putting a plaque for somebody to walk by and say, "This is where the Black home was," and they say, "Well, who was Denver Black?" And there is nothing that you can tell. If the homes are preserved, and they're preserved as a museum, and the quality of life, and it shows the quality of life from back in that time, it shows history of this city, and it preserves the history of this city. It isn't all going to be about money, or the GID, or how money is spent. Sometimes it's how money is preserved and how life is preserved in this city. And so you have to look at it from that little-picture aspect, you have to get big, and look at it from a big-picture aspect, as saying, "You're a resident of Commerce City. This is your home now, and this is where you live. This is where you serve. If you don't want to preserve the history here, why are you working for it?"
Before we continue, I've noticed over the past couple of weeks, that some of the Council members have done, just as Mr. Bullock just has done, by trying to address other Council members at the dais, and turns to the scenario of wanting to have a debate. So before we continue, I'd like to just mention to the Council that we are here as a body. I think it's important that if someone can answer a question, that's a reasonable question about the issue we're talking about, that we can allow that kind of discussion at the dais. I feel, however, though, in your opinions, it should be focused towards the audience, and it should be your opinion, and you should be able to give it, and not have to reiterate it over and over again, to save time with these meetings. So I would like to ask the Council to please keep in mind to not try to cause a debate with any of the other Council members, and to focus your opinions and your vision, your posture to the audience. Give your opinion, and then you will have your vote and your opportunity to give your comment, but please try to keep that from turning into a debate-style situation, and to act as one body while we are sitting in this manner. With that said, I will continue. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris, for your presentation. You know, earlier, I mean, last year, and there was a, Derby Board had a, I'd say, a design from consultants that we had paid, and the end result didn't seem to look like the drawing renders, the renderings of the drawings and all, the outcome, I mean, the signs were supposed to be bigger, now they're, you know, they're smaller. Really didn't change that much of the building at all. I mean, the roof and some of the, I'd say, well, yeah, just the roof, some roof repair got fixed, and then the street there, as far as the diamond, that was all done, that's all new. Is there more to come in Derby, or is what has been done, is just, it's going to remain as it is?
The Derby Master Plan calls for quite a bit more. The intersection improvements that you see at the Derby Diamond, it really calls for a continuation of that throughout Derby. Furthermore, Council has continued to fund the Catalyst Program, which matches exterior improvements for properties within the Derby District. That's seen as an enticement to hope that some of these properties actually, frankly, make improvements to their property. The city is certainly doing things to try and attempt to keep the momentum going, but frankly, at the end of the day, some of that is going to be up to the market, and some of that is also going to be up to Council. A lot of those infrastructure improvements obviously come at a cost, and so to continue to make those improvements, it will really be a function of, you know, how do those projects fit within the bigger context of everything else that needs to be funded in Commerce City? So that'll be eventually a budget decision on some of those infrastructure improvements.
So as I see it right now, the, just the way the city is laid out, as far as, I'm sorry, not city, but downtown Derby, the Black property could fit in this scenario as it remains the same, but beyond changes, there's, you know, I'd like to see more studies, or not studies, but at least come back, maybe before we take a vote in this later on, you know, after the study session, at a later date. Just see how that would play out, because from the mixed use here, the way this whole Derby, downtown Derby, master plan is laid out, that might be a tough sell later on, if that remains as a property is in present day. So I'm just trying to figure out how this would work here, and that would, it's supposed to be laid out in the Derby Master Plan as mixed use. I'm not saying that as far as the Black's house is not worth saving, but we just have to tie that in for later on, as far as how that's going to work out in the master plan. So that is tricky, to see how that would play out. Thanks.
Councilwoman Carson.
I certainly appreciate all the energy and passion of the Historical Society. They really are a passionate group, but when I look at that Derby Master Plan, that, I don't know how long it took to conceive this plan. I think it was a very lengthy time, with a lot of individuals working on it. I don't see anywhere in there where they speak of historic preservation, and it was my understanding that it was an in-depth study and plan that was put together. So I don't see where it was their vision at the time, that there was any historic preservation to be thought of in, when they did the Derby Plan. Is that your understanding, Mr. Kramer?
There was certainly a lot of discussion throughout the process, and actually, the early part of the master plan does talk about the history of Derby and the role it's played in Commerce City throughout the time, but as far as actually acting as a guide for future development, a lot of the discussion by the Derby Committee that existed at the time is that there are a lot of structures within Derby that probably need to be scraped, and that there are some buildings that probably do need to be redeveloped. And so a historic preservation designation could possibly make those efforts, well, depending on how the languages work, sometimes they're going to make it illegal, depending upon what the ordinance says, but certainly make it more difficult, even on the more lenient side. And so I think the overall sentiment was that Derby needed as much help as possible to help hopefully redevelop. I'm generalizing, and this is my own take on the situation, but I think the master plan, you're right, none of the goals for the future development call for historic preservation protections. And I'm going to look to Mr. Gardner, just to make sure I'm not speaking out of school, with your recollections of the Derby Master Plan and goals about historic preservation. Is that correct?
Let me think, there was something else that I wanted to ask you. If the city purchased this property, then it would be the city who would responsibly have to take care of it, correct? At a cost of a yearly cost of maintenance, upkeep?
Depending upon the arrangements that were made of where that property would go, in the immediate, in the immediate term, absolutely, that would become a city property, just like the Rec Center, or Conter, or City Hall.
Can you tell me what the length of time was that was spent on putting together the Derby Master Plan, over how many months or years?
The Derby Master Plan itself, not the rezoning, or anything else, just the Derby Plan, I believe it took about 12 months. Is that right? Year and a half.
And on that, was that a mix of citizens and staff and business? I assume everybody was involved in that?
Yes, Councilwoman, it was a mixture of the citizens of Derby and elsewhere in Commerce City, the City Council and staff that put that plan together. And as we said, it was about, it was about 18 months putting that plan together, and that's what precluded the zoning for the district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moreno.
I do see some contradiction occurring between the Derby Plan and our comprehensive plan, and I see that contradiction happening if we designate Derby as a historical district. I don't necessarily see that contradicting, contradiction happening if we decide to preserve one site. I just pulled up a visual right here. Where I went to school, Georgetown, it is a historical area, and there's been a balance, though. There's been amazing commercial development in that area, there's been residential development, but on M Street, one of the busiest streets in DC, there's a little stonehouse. And it's a stonehouse that was historical, that there was value in it. I don't think any dramatic historical event happened there, but it was, it was preserved to preserve the character of the neighborhood, and as a nod to the history that once happened in that area. So I don't think this is uncommon for cities, or for nonprofit groups, or whatever, to look at doing something like this. Like I said, I'm struggling with this, too. I think we should have a funding mechanism in place. I think we should have a plan in place that designates specific sites. I just, I'm not ready to say that I am willing to preclude preserving the Black property. I do think maybe no dramatic event in Commerce City history ever happened there, but thinking about the structures in that area, it is one of the original structures, one of the only, that's still standing. I mean, the only one that I can even fathom that may compare to it is Younger Brothers' Lumber, and I don't know how long that structure has been there, but I don't think it's been there as long as the 1935 Black property, so just my thoughts.
Mr. Teeter.
Thanks for the presentation, Chris, and staff. Have we looked at maybe just preserving the 1935 property and the outbuildings, just trying to buy that section and not the whole package?
Are you asking if we've?
If we can see if they'll just sell half, or, so the whole package, buying the whole package, can we just buy the 35?
Just one of the two parcels.
Right. One structure, the 1935 and the outbuildings.
I know Mr. Hayes actually reached out to the broker to see what were the criteria, what were the conditions that they were selling it under, so I don't think we've heard that heard back, so.
Yes, Mayor, and Mr. Teeter, and members of Council, we have not heard back from the broker yet. My understanding is they were marketing it as a full package, they wanted to dispose of the whole thing. So certainly one alternative we could look at.
They may want to, they may also want to preserve the Black history, so that might be a question we could at least ask, and they may want to preserve that building and outbuilding, so just a thought.
Mr. Benson.
I'm going to echo what Mr. Douglas, and Ms. Carson, and what Mr. Teeter said. I was just going to make the point that the master plan does not have any provision for historic preservation in it. historic preservation in it. But if there's going to be some historic preservation, I think that Mr. Teeter has got a good approach to that. Let's keep that one house and develop around it. But where were the historic preservation people at the time that this Derby master plan was conceived? It went on for 18 months. This property was obviously there at that time. What would we have to do to change the Derby master plan?
To change any one of our plans, comprehensive plan, Derby master plan, the Irondale Plan for that matter, it would involve basically an application process we have that's called a land use plan amendment. So that would be, these are not the law, right? The master plan is not legally binding, it's just a guiding document. But we do have a public hearing process whereby we'd probably do some community outreach, come up with some alternatives, take that to planning commission and then eventually city council for a vote in a public hearing process.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Bullock.
Mr. Kramer, in the master plan and the comprehensive plan, do they make any provisions for historical preservation of anything in either one of those plans?
Again, I'm going to look to Mr. Gardner to help me out with this, but my recollection of the master plan, it definitely talks about the history of the Derby District, the role it's played throughout time before the city was even incorporated and also since then. I don't, I don't think it has any provisions in there specifically about preserving or protecting from demolition any specific properties within Derby.
Does the comp plan have anything in it that leans towards preserving? I mean, in any of our plans, not saying that we weren't looking to the past when we were looking to the future, but were, we kind of short-sighted on a lot of our plans on historical preservation within our city in the comp plan? I mean, we've already talked about the master plan, does the comp plan call for it?
The comprehensive plan does discuss historic preservation. You know, it's interesting, I think, there really has not been a lot of demand, that's probably not the right word to use, but there hasn't been a calling for a lot of historic preservation efforts in Commerce City until just recently. And, you know, I think in the comprehensive plan, I believe we even mentioned that as either a goal or an objective, and I might actually see if Mr. Timms is here, if he recalls what the specifics of that comprehensive plan section regarding historic preservation might be. In general though, I do, I can affirm to you, Mr. Bullock, that we do discuss historic preservation and the desire to move forward with exploring that issue in further detail within the comprehensive plan. I do know that.
Okay. I'm just trying to get my mind set because I know that during the time that they were doing the master plan in Derby, that there were a lot of citizens that were on it and we went and we discussed a lot of different ideals for Derby, different facades, different makeup of the city to highlight it and everything. But I don't really recall historical preservation because I don't think we were looking in that direction. We were looking to revitalize it and energize it at that time. So I can understand why a lot of times that we, sometimes it's not even falling short, it's just, we just don't look back and forth at the same time. But I, your council alternatives, getting back to that, like Mr. Moreno said, between two and three, they would be the best alternatives to do something to move ahead. I don't know what the funding source would be, but I'm sure that council could put its head together and do something as a funding source. But I would love to see the staff work as a consultant with the historical preservation district or the Historical Society and help them move along with some of the, because this isn't going to be the last time they come forward and ask for something to be preserved in this city because there are two or three more sites that people may not know that are older than even a black 78-year-old black house. There's another site over there on 56, 53rd Avenue, no, 56th Avenue that is older than that. So it's not going to be the last time they come forward, but I would love to see a little, something that can take two and three and put them together and work with the council if it's the council's desire.
Okay. Mr. Turin.
Here's the situation the council's in this evening. This is still a regular meeting, so you do have the alternative to give direction to staff if you choose to do so tonight. But one thing needs to be considered, time is somewhat of the essence, I believe, so I think if you decide that you want to have staff proceed with some plan to bring back to you, I think you also need to include authorization for the staff to seek to negotiate an option to at least tie up the property for a period of time if you want to proceed with anything. Because otherwise, it's on the market and you very well may lose out on an opportunity if you choose to proceed with anything. So tonight, if you want staff to have some direction to continue to explore the possibility of acquiring that property, then staff needs to hear from you in that regard. If you're not interested in proceeding with any plan, then I think staff needs to hear from you in that regard. And if you're going to proceed with the former approach, then we also need to have some indication that you'd be in favor of trying to negotiate an option and perhaps even a division of the property because there are two lots. So legally, you could purchase one lot and not purchase the other lot if the seller were inclined to allow that kind of a transaction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McElhany.
Thank you. I certainly am supportive of staff looking at developing a strategic plan to handle future historic preservation opportunities. I think, and I've really been just trying to sit and listen and reflect on this discussion tonight. One of the first discussions I found myself in and Mr. Benson found ourselves and when we came on council was the Derby discussions and the progression of discussions that ensued thereafter. And I think, reflecting on Mr. Bullock's points about what were the, what was the thinking at the time that that was taking shape? And my recollection coming in was about transformation with an attention to a point in time that was sort of the heyday of that area. How could, how could the city help inject structure and capital and the tools needed to help see that area become an even better version of what it may have once been? And it was my understanding, because again, a lot of the discussions preceded my time on council, but that that was really sort of the direction that was sought. And in those discussions, I can remember vividly discussions here on the dais with Ms. Droder or others talking about, you know, the things that would be nice to preserve, like the bowling alley, but the acknowledgement that those were not viable necessarily. And there was sort of this challenging balance of the ideal with the real. And so I've been sitting here staring at the map and looking at Google Street View and trying to figure out how this property, which is essentially one-fourth of one city block, square in the middle of sort of the epicenter of what we want to see evolve in Derby, how does that fit? Like if we go down one path versus the other, what does that do, good, bad, or otherwise, to the evolution of that area? And so when I look at that, and Mr. Teeter raised a great point, well, do you keep one property and not the other? What does that, what does that become? Is there a plan, is there a vision that the Historical Society has for what do you do with a quarter of a city block in an area that's set to transform? And how does that, how does that fit? And could it be made to fit? Is it, what are the costs of making it fit? What are the benefits of making it fit? What are the risks of trying to make it fit? I guess, I have a lot more questions than I have answers and I know that there is a time pressure to try and make a decision on this before the opportunity passes by, but I, I don't know. I mean, I don't have a clear sense that it's the best thing to do. I certainly appreciate the history and the contributions to the community that the family has made, but without a more clear sense of what the possible risks to the Derby revitalization might be by trying to hang on to it and not necessarily having the capital to see it refitted or protected or all of those things, then I, to me, it starts to look more of a risk than it does a benefit. If on the other hand, we had somebody who had the money to come in and say, we're going to take the old home on this property and we're going to convert it into, you know, this thing. Here's its future purpose, here's how it's preserved, here's how the rest of it can transform. I mean, that visioning seems to be necessary in order to make a decision on how the city commits to, commits its capital and its resources to help preserve this. I, I don't know, I have a lot of questions and I want to hear thoughts on, on those points, I guess.
Mr. Moreno.
I think Councilman Bullock raises interesting points when he asked about historic preservation present in both the comp plan and other plans, subsequent plans like the Economic Development Plan and Derby Plan that have been put together. I think it wasn't a focus because frankly, the Historical Society didn't exist yet and there wasn't this coalition of citizens that got together and decided that historic preservation was important and it's something that they wanted to see. So I think we're at an interesting, interesting time because that organization does now exist and they're still new. And this is one of the properties that I think does have a lot of historical significance in Commerce City. Again, I'll say, I don't think it's incompatible. As I mentioned, and I keep going back to it, the old stonehouse in Georgetown, there are clothing stores and restaurants right next to this old stonehouse and it's just, you have the benefit of preserving the historical integrity and giving a nod to the history of that area, but also allowing things to move on. I think Councilman Teeter brings up an interesting compromise and I don't know if we can move in this direction, but to look at preserving the 1935 property. It is one of the original structures in Derby, it was there long before Commerce City ever became a city. To look at compromise and look at perhaps, not saying that we will, but perhaps looking at to see if the seller would be amenable to preserving that property and then allowing development to occur around it and in conjunction with putting together this historic strategic I think we can, I don't know if everyone can agree to that, but it sounds like it could be an interesting compromise to be able to move forward on this.
Councilwoman Carson.
I fully understand that time is of the essence because this property is up for sale. And as Mr. McElhany stated, I guess I have more questions than there are answers. I guess I always look to see what our plan is, what it was that previous councils had planned for the future, what it was citizens when they came together had planned for the future. And I'm kind of stuck here because there isn't a plan for this preservation of historical sites or whatever in Commerce City. So even though this house is up for sale, I still think you need to take those steps backwards and say, if historical preservation is a place that the city needs to be going, then I think we need to be putting together some sort of a plan. What is the criteria for historical preservation? Can citizens, if their house or if a church fell into that, could they apply for that preservation status as a historical site within the city? I don't think that we as council make the best decisions when we don't have plans and we don't have that good direction. And it's, I'm not trying to sound negative against this, I am just very hesitant because if we make this decision, then we have already decided, I guess, that we have put some stipulations out there before there is a plan. How do we know what the next thing is going to fall into line with? Is it going to be based off of this or, I don't know. I just think that we need to have more of an idea, even if we don't have a full plan, but what would that plan look like?
Mr. Bullock.
Thinking back, you know, I wonder what the city council of Denver did when they were planning Araria Campus and they had the St. Caxton Church that they built around down there, how they went about that, deciding that they were going to preserve this church and some of the buildings and their houses down there from that era that they have preserved and built the Araria Campus around it. But I know they were in the same dilemma we're in now and Ms. Carson makes an interesting point. We have a great idea, but we don't have a plan. And I don't want to put council in the position of saying, okay, or put ourselves in the position of saying, we need to do this, but then we're stuck because we have this property and what do we do next? But I really feel it's something we need to do and I just, you know, this is when I look to Mr. Kramer as our expert on staff, that he's going to come up with a great plan because that's what he always does and he's never failed us yet. So I know you have a plan somewhere back there that is going to make it work in all directions. Okay, so I'll quit talking and you can just tell me what it is.
Mr. Mayor, a few things. First of all, in relation to the discussion about the historical significance of Derby in the Derby master planning process, I think it's important for everyone to remember, there were a lot of alternatives and a lot of themes thrown around in that process, some of which that had nothing to do with what happened in Derby in the past. And the one that came out as the identified theme, that mid-century architectural theme, is really a nod, it's a direct nod, it's not an accidental thing, it's a direct connection to the history of Derby. And so in that way, I would offer, it, there's a pretty clear distinction between protecting existing structures from being redeveloped and setting the framework for how you want new structures to be. The Derby master plan just was for new structures moving forward. It didn't really say, let's freeze Derby in time and not, you know, let's not protect the whole district from getting, you know, redeveloped. But it doesn't mean that they're turning their backs on what the history of Derby is all about vis a vis the actual design guidelines themselves. I think those are historic in nature. The second thing, in regards to the comprehensive plan, our crack staff was able to research the comprehensive plan, I've got copies of, we do have two key comprehensive plan goals. Chapter 14, the cultural facilities and tourism chapter, CF 1A, prepare and art, I'm sorry, CF 2A, prioritize historic resources, evaluate and prioritize historic resources as it relates to Commerce City. So you can see our council alternative number two would be meeting a council goal, or a comprehensive plan goal. The second one is the Historic Preservation Board, consider whether Historic Preservation Board could advance the aims of this plan to elevate awareness of historical sites and features and preserve historic resources. That would probably actually fall under a city action as opposed to something that would be run by and implemented by the Historical Society. But if we were to undertake a strategic planning effort like this with the Historical Society, there's no reason why we couldn't do a parallel effort, a sister effort to ensure that what are we doing as a city in addition to the Historical Society? So we certainly did talk about historic preservation, the comprehensive plan, what we didn't do is lay out what those specific criteria are. As it relates to the Denver Black Property and what the alternatives are tonight, the option that Mr. Gaylor was talking about is certainly something if the desire the desire is that council has more questions that need to be asked, we could at least put an option on the property for 60 days, 90 days. There's a certain financial cost that goes along with that because at the end of that 60, 90 days, if council decided not to move forward with the purchase, we would obviously be out that option money. But it at least would protect the property in the meantime from a possible sale. Now, the flip side to that is we obviously still have land use controls. We have land use controls in Derby actually more than we do in the other parts of the city. So in that way, worst case scenario, even if nothing were to happen, I would like council to be aware that, that in some ways, you know, that there's still, that property will develop at least in accordance with the Derby Master Plan. It's not going to just become any random thing that anybody else who wants to buy it could dream of. There are specific controls that we still have for that property.
Okay. And before I get to you, Mr. Moreno, because we've went up and down the dais quite a bit, I'm going to go ahead and give my two cents, my opinion to the audience. Growing up in, in Commerce City and remembering what that was as a child, the Derby area when it was thriving, I think carries a passion to those of us who grew up here. Not taking away from any of the council who didn't grow up here, but there's a piece of that. When you were a kid, go up there, the Ben Franklin Five and Dime, the Walgreens, the Tasty Donuts, you know, all of that stuff, we remember how it was. I watched the previous council put quite a bit of money into an intersection. I will also say that 13 years ago, I was elected onto City Council and for 13 years, the City Council's talked about redevelopment of Derby and the only thing I've seen happen is L. Harding's expand, the city do the Derby Resource Center and the intersection. I don't recall any, of any, any other significance that's happened in 13 years. That Urban Renewal Authority position on Derby runs out in a certain amount of time, does not?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the designation of urban renewal, yes?
It will run out and, and, and there's not a lot of years left before it runs out, correct?
I believe it was 2007 when the Urban Renewal Authority for Derby was passed, so 25 years from that time is what I remember.
And I thought it was before that, but it, it will run out. I do have to say, Mrs. Lewis came in and, and talked about the Connor Property, talked about the significance to try to preserve some of the history of Commerce City. And I guess my privy would be that the council would, number one, direct staff to help produce a historic preservation strategic plan in conjunction with the historical society to work towards future opportunities that may arise to preserve the historic pieces of Commerce City. You know, our, our community as a whole, there's a small area of historical value. There's, most of our community is new or newer. So I think it's important that we try to, to preserve some of those things. And I would like to see staff go back and talk to the broker and to try to work out some type of refundable, if possible, a refundable option on the, on the land, to have a little more in-depth discussion. I'd like to know if the property can be divided as far as the sale is concerned. I know legally it's divided because it's two lots, to see if we can preserve the older, the older home, because I think that that's important for our community. I watched the city spend a lot of money in Derby on that intersection and you could have purchased a big chunk of Derby with the amount of money that was spent. We need to widen Highway 2. There's a lot of things that have to happen to make Derby develop into what I believe the vision put forth in that master plan is. But just because we're moving forward doesn't mean we don't have to remember where we came from. And I think that in that piece, in that area, the Black Home is probably the most significant of all the historical pieces. That and, and I would think Tasty Donuts is, is, is a big piece because it's been there forever. I mean, I don't know, it's been there 100 years, I think, or, or close to. So I think we need to take all of that into consideration, but there are a lot of questions that, that need to be answered. I think with the broker input, with the historical society input, with ideas into the historic preservation piece, we have two issues we're dealing with. One is putting together this historic preservation strategic plan. The other is the Black House and how do we get to there? So I would, I would like to see the council direct the staff to talk to the broker, talk about preserving at least the one house, see if we can get them to hold off for a little while and come back to this council with some recommendations on potential funding sources for that as well. And I will move on. Mr. Moreno.
Well, not only has Tasty Donuts been there forever, but they're still the best donuts in the metro area, so. I, I was actually prepared to, to make a motion regarding the light, what you just set out. I move to direct staff to look at creating a, a historic preservation strategic plan in conjunction with the Commerce City Historical Society and approach the broker or landowner of the Black Property to see if a division of the property is possible to preserve the 1935 property, but also explore a refundable option on the, on the property.
Would you be as kind to include having the staff try to identify some funding sources if we desire to purchase?
And include in that, asking staff to identify possible funding sources.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. A motion and a second to give staff some direction on the items presented this evening. Any other comments? Saying none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Staff has direction. Next item on the agenda, stormwater utility fee implementation. I'd invite the engineering department to come forward and give us their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We've got both Darren Sterling and Matt Weeterspoon from the Public Works Department Engineering Division to present. The last update on this topic was a couple of months ago and we're progressing with the project. We're going to get some real numbers for you to look at tonight and also a more formalized implementation plan. So Darren, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you, Jim. If you remember, if you, or, good evening, mayors and members of council. Couple of months ago, I was before you to give you an update on the stormwater utility and where we were, basically reviewed what we had presented last August to the council and with the new council members, wanted to bring everybody up to speed to where we were. Tonight, we're going to continue with that effort and a little bit later on, we'll be having our consultants come up and go through a little bit of the process with you. First, I wanted to kind of, kind of review a little bit about where we were at. First and foremost, the need is to meet our water quality permit requirements with the state of Colorado, which is an extension of our MPDS program mandated by the EPA. It deals with water quality from a construction standpoint as well as maintaining water quality post-construction and a long-term maintenance program. It also involves reviewing these, reviewing plans for new, new development and making sure that we maintain our permit requirements with the state. Second part of that is to reduce our drainage problems and risks associated with storm, storm drainage. It's one of those things that you never see. It's not there until it rains. It's not like a, a street where you see the traffic on a daily basis backing up. Well, drainage is one of those, those silent things that it's invisible until you, you need it. And then when you need it, you need it in a big way. So that's the other part of the program that this will, this will address. Getting into the, the water quality permit requirements, capital projects is the, the water quality component of any of the drainage things. So like if we build a, a large detention pond, there's a water quality component. And so that, the capital projects piece there is just a, a percentage of the capital projects. Maintenance cost is what goes into maintaining the storm sewer system, storm drainage system that we currently have. So that means cleaning, cleaning the streets, cleaning the inlets out, cleaning out our waterways and cleaning out our water quality ponds and, and our detention ponds and taking care of that, some of the, some of the maintenance associated with some of the minor problems that come with drainage when it comes along and erosion. And then again, also our, our current process with permitting review, engineering and administration of the program, it's an ongoing need. The drainage and flood needs, the capital projects there, $1.2 million. That basically represents about 20 years' worth of work that we would propose to do with the funding that we would get. And we'll go into a little bit of detail on the next slide, please. This is, this is just a broad breakdown of, of the projects that we've identified that, that we think need to be done. Irondale Gulch doesn't have a lot of drainage system defined in there. Water flows wherever it wants, when it rains. Just by doing a simple overlay on a road, we alter the way the drainage flows through, through the area. So it was working right before afterwards. Now we've got water flowing down somebody's driveway through, through their property and, and causing problems that way because it's not going where it used to. So establishing a drainage system in Irondale Gulch, First Creek are, are really important. Second Creek, we've got improvements where we've got a blockage with the canal that we'd like to take care of with the O'Brien, at the O'Brien Canal. And that ties in also with a regional park and, and that sort of connection. Fernal Trail Outfall, that's in Fairfax Park, that's all associated with the Fairfax Outfall. We've got some, some problems over there with the age of the system as well as it's undersized. And so about every five, six years, we have some problems with Fairfax Park filling up and overtopping. So that kind of, it just gives you an idea of the, the various projects that are needed, but don't really get a lot of glamour and so they don't get funded and we really need to get some sort of system going there. So with that, I'll ask Carrie McCray to come up from AMIC. They are a infrastructure and environmental firm assisting us with putting together the stormwater utility.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Carrie McCray. I specialize in helping with the stormwater funding part. And we've been working with the city for quite a number of years now on figuring out just what the stormwater requirements are, what the program ought to include and of course, what the, what those, what it all comes out to, what is the cost of, of the service that needs to be provided. So keeping that $3.4 million number in mind, we've helped the city look at a number of, of different ways to potentially approach coming up with that funding mechanism. So we've looked at a variety of options and really studied in-depth the feasibility of each one. So we came back to the idea of a stormwater utility enterprise because it offers many benefits to the city and it definitely came out as the, the most clear benefit. So just to go quickly over the stormwater utility characteristics and really the key reasons why it came out as the most desirable funding mechanism to go forward with. It's, it's similar to a water or sewer utility in that you end up paying, the, the fee that you pay, it represents the impact you put on the system or the amount that you use the system. All the revenue that would be collected by a stormwater fee would go directly to the stormwater program itself, so it's a dedicated funding storm, funding program. And perhaps more, most importantly, it's a reliable and stable funding mechanism that would allow the program to, to plan with, you know, a number of years. Instead of having any fluctuation in, in funding, they'd be, they'd be able to know exactly what's going to be coming in and, and plan many, many years out. So the, the most important underlying principle is that the fees to each, each property within the city, under, under the utility concept, everybody's fees would be proportional to the amount of impact that they put on the stormwater system. Go to the next. And I'll reiterate this a number of times because it's really important to understand how the utility would work and what you're going to be billing people for so that you can understand how the fee is calculated and, and we can get into looking at some preliminary numbers this evening. So just like other utilities like water, electric or gas, the quantity that is used by the customer is what represents the fee. Within water, wastewater and stormwater, the quantity of, of that wastewater that's generated by the customer is, is what we really look at. So the stormwater user fees themselves should be, should fairly allocate the cost of the service of the program. So that $3.4 million that we're looking at in stormwater, stormwater-based needs, we have to find the best and fairest way to distribute that cost across the residents and, and business owners in, in the city. Again, the utility concept is designed to charge customers for managing the stormwater that leaves their property. Now, this is a federal mandate. Your, your stormwater program is an absolute requirement. This isn't an option. So the fee then is based on the amount of property roughly that leaves the, the property based on the impervious developed surfaces. The reason this is so important is that because development changes the way that natural hydrology works. And so it changes the way that water can percolate through a system or be treated by the natural landscape itself. And so as we add development, it, it also picks up, while it, while it's preventing the water from infiltrating the ground, it's also requiring, making that water pick up all the pollutants that across the, the surfaces that it runs across. And it also causes a lot more. It causes a lot higher peak flow, a lot more impact to the drainage system within the city. So now you're all wanting to know, what does this utility mean for our citizens when, when we're looking at fees, you know, is, is the city alone? Absolutely not. A number of communities surrounding you have stormwater utilities in place and stormwater fees. Now, it's hard to compare these fees one-on-one. It, it looks like a jumble. There are fees in Colorado ranging all the way up to $17 for the average single-family home and, and as little as a dollar or two. So you might wonder where, where you would fall in all of this and how you would compare your fees to others. So here's a snapshot of some fees in utilities in communities surrounding Commerce City. And I'd like to point out that, so Adams County is also considering a fee of this type. These numbers represent very different things. You see that there are three main components that these fees may or may not pay for in different communities. Those are the state stormwater permit requirements, storm sewer maintenance and drainage capital improvements. In Commerce City, the fee would, would be covering all of those components. In some of the, the communities that have much lower fees, you'll see the $3, the $2, those communities are raising much, much smaller amounts with these stormwater fees than Commerce City is hoping to get. The $3.4 million range for, as a revenue target for your program would put you, in our preliminary studies, at approximately $5 to $6, probably $6 per single-family home. So you can see you're, you're close to the average with that and it's, it's certainly reasonable with the amount of money you'd be trying to raise with the $3.4 million. How, how would that fee work out? Well, we've done a detailed study of the makeup of the properties within Commerce City, whether they're residential, what building characteristics do they typically have on them, how many commercial, how many industrial. So we, we've really looked at the, the complete makeup of Commerce City. And we've determined that given that, the, the revenue goal, that was some, some rather basic structure calculations, an approximately $6 fee for, for standard single-family homes, of which there are more than 10,000 in the city. So more than 90% of your residents would be receiving a fee of approximately $6 under our, our current estimations. Now, those are the standard lots. There are certainly some single-family lots that are, that are labeled that way by the assessor, but are certainly non-standard. And so there are slightly more than 200 of these throughout the city and these we would want to handle especially. As you can see, it's proportionally much different than your standard single-family home. And so the application of that standard $6 fee would not necessarily be fair or equitable. So we proposed that for these types of, of single-family properties, we would handle those the same way we would with... those the same way we would with, non-single-family is what NSFR stands for. So that's your commercial, everything, everything else, basically, besides your standard single-family. So we want to look at what some sample fees would be. Now, keep in mind, this is with, these are some numbers in their infancy, based on that, on that six-dollar number, the, the 3.4 million dollar target, and breaking it down the way we, we have so far. So these, these are not in any way set in stone. I want to present them to you so that you can figure out kind of where within the range of fees, your fees may fall. So at that six-dollar equivalent, a fairly small commercial lot, this is about a quarter acre, it's a pretty typical density, it's about 60% developed. So with that, proportional to that six-dollar, single-family fee, this would be approximately 15 dollars. Now, this same property, if we picked it up and put it in, under one of, any other of the utilities listed here, that's what you see listed is its, its fee that would be underneath one of the surrounding utilities. We'll get a little progressively larger as we go through some. This is, again, a fairly small lot, it's a, it's a half-acre, so double size of, of the last property. Its fee would be approximately 22 dollars, well within the range of the surrounding communities. This is a much larger property at, at nearly two acres. And, and the reason I, I take you through, I'm going to show these and a couple of larger ones until we get to almost the absolute extreme, so that you can see really what, what the range of fees may be. So keep in mind, this is, this is a very large, this is a large property at nearly two acres. It's also a fairly standard density at this size, be about 70 dollars a month. And you can see that, that also fits well within your, your surrounding utility neighbors. This is the, an example of the extreme size. This is nearly eight acres and almost completely developed. So this would be, like I say, one of the more extremes. And so the, these are the properties that would really need to plan for this kind of a fee. As you can see, it's, it's certainly not with, outside of the range of stormwater fees in the, in the surrounding communities. We, I certainly welcome any questions about those particular fees if you have any. Just quickly, want to go through the basic timeline that we'll have to follow of, if the utility is to be implemented during this year and for fees to go out, and as I believe is planned, on January 13th. So of 2013. The process has to follow fairly specific timeline in that we need, would need to be able to develop the impervious database that all of these measurements are based on for the fees themselves, and, and build the fee structure, decide about the rate, the rate structure itself, set the specific fee. And that, that's along kind of the, the fee development side of things. So though, that really drives the timeline. If these fees were to be billed as planned on the county property tax bill, then that also sets some very rigid deadlines. So on October 31st, the fee data would be due to the treasurer's office so that they can incorporate it into their property tax system and get those fees out starting in January 2013. So working back from there, you know, I've spoken a little bit about the fee development process, but the other key portion of, of getting the utility, the utility implementation process would be the public outreach effort, the messaging campaign, getting the public on board with us. So there are a number of different tracks, if you will, that we're, that we'll go through during this implementation process. So the rate policies and revenue analysis, that all has to do with what I mentioned first, with mapping the impervious and, and developing the rate and the fees. The public education and messaging campaign, we'll tell you a little bit more about in just a few moments. The program and development and operations planning track, that's really where we, we work to refine the very specific numbers about the needs, the priorities, what the program really will entail, and, and how it will be operated underneath the utility. The billing system design and implementation, that's, that's the track where we work with getting the, the fee invoices the way they ought to be, and working with the treasurer's system, developing the financial aspects, which also works in with the financial administration and policy. And within that track, we'll be developing all the, the financial policies of the utility itself. A customer service and appeals process is going to be absolutely vital to, to the fee process. That would begin in earnest in late summer to prepare customer service process and, and design those appeals processes, and then that would be up and running for customer support right as the bills went out. With that, I'll hand it over to our public education update, Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I wanted to provide you with some background on what the city does currently for public education and what we're doing specifically for this stormwater utility study. I know there were some questions last time when this topic was brought forward to you in study session, so I wanted to give you some background. The city actually has a pretty consistent stormwater public education campaign that we run throughout the year. We support the Public Works Department staff in some of the programs they do with the schools through the Water Warriors Program. Every year through neighborhood outreaches, we provide stormwater information and education through some interactive displays. And then we run some annual stories in the city newsletter on water pollution and the importance of, of these stormwater efforts. If you look at the next slide, what we've done specifically with the utility is, as we got information from the Public Works Department, we started running articles in our city newsletter about the study and why this was an important topic. We also reached out using our social media networks through the Economic Development Twitter account, the Commerce City Twitter account, and our Facebook website. And what we've been able to see through the analytics that we get from our social media is that we've reached 372 followers and 210 followers with the Twitter postings, and we've reached more than 220 fans, for those of you who know that nomenclature, on the Facebook page, not only with the conversation and dialogue about stormwater and why it's important, but also pushing people to an informational video. So we've been using those social media avenues, and we've also using Channel 8 with the video as well as slides encouraging people to, to go to the website. Now that we have the information that's been preliminarily provided, especially in terms of rates, and that's really what we were looking for before we went into full swing with our public outreach and education campaign, was to really understand what those rates would be, and we want to vet those. So our goal from an education and information standpoint is to work through the various channels listed on the screen, as well as reach out through our business advisory committees and nonprofit organizations to present this preliminary draft fee information and get their thoughts on what impact does that have for their business or for their organization? What impact does that have for our homeowners? So we can bring that back to you in, in June, when I believe the next update is, so you can take that feedback into consideration as you ultimately make decisions. So we'll be using our homeowner associations, we'll have a brochure, we're helping facilitate meetings with school boards, other businesses. We'll continue to use our newsletter and social media sites, and we'll be able to hit that first neighborhood outreach in June, and we're working on some more media opportunities. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Darren.
Thank you, Michelle. Next is the next steps that we'll be going through to get through this process. We'll continue, of course, with the public information and getting that, getting the word out and the story out and getting that explained. Revenue and fee structure will be, continue to be worked on, and next month, or not next month, in June, we'll be back with another update to go over that and give you a lot of detail on that. And that'll lead right into July when we'll be presenting the, the ordinance to you for creation of the utility. And then a month later, when we come back for the second reading, we'll be presenting the resolution setting the fee at that same time, so that gets us through the, the rest of the process. And with that, we're, we're open to discussion, questions?
Mr. Moreno.
A couple, a couple of questions. It was stated that this is a, a federal requirement, that this isn't an option. Can you provide more information on that?
Yes. Back in about 1988, the federal government passed the MPDS program, which is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Program, to be administered through the Environmental Protection Agency. And what that did is it, it gave us all these guidelines that we got to follow on water quality, both during construction and post-construction. And it's all in an effort to clean up the rivers. I'm not so sure we've got a lot of problems here, but back east, there were a lot of problems. But we all have to, to pitch in and, and clean up the rivers. So that's where this, this was born out of. From there, it went to the states, the states had to implement rules and everything, and so they actually the administrator of the program, and that's, that's where our permit comes from. And it, we call it the CDPS program, which is the Colorado Discharge Permit System. And that's where all of our regulations are that we've got to follow. We've got a permit that we fill out with, I think it's six or seven items that we've got to meet on an annual basis. So we fill out a report, we have to turn that in by the end of February, I believe, on an annual basis, that explains what we've done as far as meeting the goals of the program. And then that, that permit is actually coming up for renewal here shortly, and there's some additional mandates that are coming from the EPA, they're going to be added on to that permit that we're going to have to meet. So it's, it's a continuing unfunded mandate that we've got to meet.
All right, is, is Commerce City currently in compliance or out of compliance?
Currently, we are in compliance.
And up until this point, how is the city funded stormwater projects?
Stormwater projects compete on a regular basis or annual basis in the, the CIP program. And then as far as the, meeting the stormwater permit requirements, that's fun, that's been funded through just the regular general fund and the engineering budget.
And it's proposed to, to tack this on to the, the annual property tax bill through the county. So when, would the fee be separated out because folks are charged twice a year for their property taxes? Would it be once, would it be included on one, or would it be parceled out like the taxes are?
That would be, that would really be parceled out the way the taxes are. They got an option, just following the state, following the same process you would for your property taxes. Pay it once, pay it twice, it doesn't, it's really up to them.
And would multifamily residential apartment complexes, mobile home courts, would those be handled as commercial or residential?
Good question. I will defer to Carrie to maybe answer that.
The, the only distinction being made between different types of properties is to divide out the single, the standard single-family residential structures, the, the typical standalone detached single-family home. And the, the reason that's done is not to figure out residential versus commercial or anything like that. It's just to simply figure out a standard unit of measure. And so we have done a lot of math to figure out what is that equivalent residential value with, of, of impervious development. And so the, the fees charged would not necessarily be different, that, that rate behind that six-dollar fee would be charged proportionally to all properties. So essentially, when you look at it that way, everybody's being charged under the same standard of measure.
It's more the size of the property and how much impervious surface, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then regarding the public outreach, Michelle, we'll be doing public outreach, obviously the citizen aspect is important, will be doing it, will we be doing it with businesses as well?
Yes, as I alluded to briefly, we're going to use the Business Advisory Committee and through Economic Development as a primary feedback loop. But we've also identified with Public Works as help, you know, some key industries that could be affected with, you know, the large amounts of impervious surface, so we'll be using other avenues and smaller group meetings, you know, for our logistics, advanced manufacturing companies to really get their feedback as well. So that's part of the smaller group meetings we're going to be having.
Great. And on the, where we were compared to other regional municipalities and, and county governments, it says that Adams County is considering implementation. Do we know when they are considering implementing something similar? I mean, I think the worst would be that we, we double-hit people.
The fee for Adams County would be an, an unincorporated fee, and they are considering the same timeline that you are.
So they, that charge would not be levied on commercial or residential properties in the, in Commerce City's boundaries?
No, it's, it's unincorporated county only.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Benson. The presentation that you obviously spent a lot of time coming up with, how would the fee be collected?
The fee would be collected through the, the property tax distribution from the county. We would contract with the county to collect the fee for the city, and that, that's on, on the bulk of the, the properties. We would have to have a, a special directed internal billing system to handle some of the, the, what you might call non-standard properties. So the, the nonprofits and new houses that would come in because they wouldn't be caught in that year, some of the other new developments, we would begin billing after, after a CO would trigger something, something like this. So we also have an internal billing, but it's a very small thing.
But it's just going to show up on everybody's tax bill, essentially?
Yes.
And you're saying that the average is going to be, what, six dollars, you think?
Six dollars a month for single-family residential.
And is that going to vary? I mean, some people have bigger lots than others, and they have more impermeable areas. Is that going to vary, or is it just going to be a standard flat six-dollar per single-family residence? Or is it going to depend on the size of the lot? How is that going to work?
We've identified, I think in one of the previous slides, we showed, we've identified about 200 single-family lots that we would classify as non-standard, which are really large lots and, and have a house and maybe a barn or something else on them. So those would be calculated much the same way as what the, the other question was with the, the condos or townhomes. We'd actually go in, go into it and calculate out all the bits and pieces of it to come up with the charge for those lots.
But for the standard, it's, it's all going to be the same?
Correct.
All right. That's a lot easier than going in and measuring each lot down to the square foot, I guess. Okay. Thank you.
Getting back to this whole implementation of this process, when you've devised the formula, how much of this six dollars per household goes back to the city that is going to be working on different projects that are in there? I think it was about your third or fourth slide, the different, um, front, uh, go, um, Second Creek and those items there.
Could you back up one, right there? Basically, we've got a, we've got a monthly, we've got a, hold on a second, um, wait. Basically, we've got a charge with the county that we would have to pay for, for them collecting the fee for us, which is built into this. And then the rest of the money is going into these various categories that are listed there. So roughly half of it would be going into capital projects for actually construction, and the other, the other portion would be going into operating the system, maintaining the system, and reviewing, inspecting.
Now, when Mr. Moreno asked you if we were in compliance, you said, yes, we're in compliance. And what of these projects here takes us out of compliance? I know that different things have to be done, but there, EPA mandates that you have to collect this money for a stormwater cleaning that runs off your property. We're not allowed to keep any stormwater that, or any water that's on our property. We are not allowed to- We are not allowed to store it, correct?
That's correct. We're not mandated to charge a fee at all. This is just a funding mechanism in order to cover our costs to operate the requirements, to operate and meet the requirements of the federal government and the state. And then there's the additional capital improvements that we want to make to improve our system.
Okay. I just have a disconnect here somewhere because of the fact. And I wanted to get back to one question, and then I will let somebody else speak. What does SEMSWA, what county or what jurisdiction is that?
That's the Southeast Metro Stormwater Authority.
Where is that at?
It's in the southeast metro area. So it covers Arapaho County, and I think possibly goes into a little bit Douglas. City of Centennial is covered with that. And they're actually an entity that their only purpose is to operate this program.
Okay. And, okay, they were built just to operate this program. And so in the comparison that you did with the other counties and jurisdictions, I notice Brighton and Aurora and Westminster were low compared to us. Why are we so high?
What's happening there is, in these various jurisdictions, they've decided to cover only components of the stormwater, the total stormwater package. Some of them are only covering what's required to meet the state requirements for the CDPS program. Some of them are doing only storm sewer maintenance. Some of them are only doing capital projects. And some of them have combinations. So as you see, the numbers go up, they're covering combinations. What we're proposing is to cover all three of these categories.
Okay.
Correct. Otherwise, we're covering some of these costs out of the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Thanks, Daryl. Just from what I'm hearing, it really is a hidden tax. Even though we're labeling it as a fee, it is a hidden tax. Now, once we complete these projects, I mean, they're our own structures, facilities, right? So that's all we have to maintain them, correct?
Correct.
And we're not working with South Adams because I know in certain metro districts, they have their own storm drain that they put in as the community was, as far as, well, some are already, some are in the phase of being already built out as far as the storm drains as the homes are built around there. So how would that impact those areas that are already collecting the fee for the residents through a metro tax?
The metro districts are, number one, they're paying for the cost of that infrastructure to be constructed first. And second, there's, the portion of the stormwater that they're maintaining is the water quality component. We require new developments to take care of their own water quality. So within the development where you live, the water coming off of your development runs through one of these ponds. And the dirty water is cleaned up there. And so that's where we leave it with the metro district, the HOA or whatever, to take responsibility for that part. The water leaves that property in a fairly clean state, runs down into the rest of the system. And what we do is then, we have regional ponds, which also have water quality components that need to be cleaned out. So the metro districts in that, they're only, we're not really double-dipping them. We're already maintaining the storm sewer system within the metro district. It's just that water quality component which we're leaving with them.
Okay. And has the city or currently, do we have a partnership with the Urban Drainage Flood Control District? Have we thought about partnering with them to, because they help with certain projects? And they usually match the government?
We work with Urban Drainage. They have someplace around a million to a million and a half dollars a year to spend in Adams County. So all the money that they collect through the property taxes has to be spent within the county that it's collected. And so there's about a million and a half a year that's available for us to partner with them on projects. They match at the rate of about 50/50, depending on all the funding that's available. And so we'll certainly be going in with them to help cover some of our costs. But they're by no means going to be able to match any of these numbers that we've got with almost $2 million or $1.4 million worth of construction a year. There'll be a small component of that. But we will work with them.
Now, up north, I'm not sure, just as far as that area being built. The homes and commercial areas were built above the 100-year floodplain, correct? There's no homes or commercial built in the 100-year floodplain, right? So the water flows from those areas that are above, that are high, to flow down to that plain area. Is that correct?
Anything that's built probably in the last 20 years, we've made sure it is above the 100-year floodplain. There's areas of the city where there's much older structures, which are within the floodplain. And in some cases, with some of the projects that we would propose, we'd be able to remove some of those areas from the floodplain. But there's other areas where there's just too much required to remove them from the floodplain.
Now, since that's open space, is there any way we can get money from the Conservation Trust Fund, from the Colorado Lottery?
Typically, that goes towards things like parks, trails, and open space. So trail components could be eligible. But the drainage components themselves, so like drop structures or ponds or things like that, wouldn't qualify.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a few questions. On the single-family homes, it's really loud. Where I live, there's some properties that are half-acre and an acre. They don't look anything like these pictures where we're looking at, I don't know, multi-acres. Would those fall under what is considered standard?
I don't have specific information to be able to completely address that. Okay. I guess I do. A half-acre and larger would be considered non-standard. So those houses over there on the far east side, they would fall in the non-standard category and get calculated. But the houses right across the street from them going to the west, they're a little bit smaller. They're more along the lines of a quarter of an acre. So for those who don't know, this is up in River Run. Those houses would fall into the standard. So they would be built at $6 a month.
Do you have a clue at what we're looking at this would generate per year? When I look at this, I didn't do the math because it doesn't, it tells me how many rooftops of single families we have, but that's the only information. It looks to me like it would generate a lot of money.
The total for the city that we would generate would be 3.4 million.
A year.
A year. Single-family residential is, I think, about a million? 10,000, but how much does it generate? About 600,000 or 700,000? 10,000 rooftops at $6 is going to generate about $600,000, $600,000 or $700,000 a year. So the single-family residential is a small, about a third of the component.
And then when I go through these comparison charts, because it was said we would be right in the middle, I don't find it in the middle. When we're looking at surrounding communities for single-family homes, you list seven. This would be, there's only three that are higher. Is that right?
Yes.
Then we get into the businesses. There's only, there you list eight. There would only be three that would be higher than us. And these are cities that are quite a bit larger than what we are. Denver, Aurora. Then we go on down to the next one. There would only be three higher than us. Then the following one, there would only be two higher than us. And then all the way down at the bottom, there would only be two higher than us. So I see as, at the top part of this scale, as far as the fees that we would be charging. I know what you've said about what some cities are doing, but when I look at the price of what Northland and Brighton's are compared to everybody else's, I don't know. This seems like an awful lot of money, especially for some of our large businesses, for some of our people out there who have those properties with five acres on them. I don't know what it is that I would be approving, how we would calculate what their fee would be. So I just have some questions here. And it does seem like we're very, I guess I don't like using the word "average" when we're running in the top of every single chart that's there. That's not really the word "average," I don't think, so.
You're right. Using the average is probably not really a fair description there because City of Northland, the $2 only covers their stormwater permit requirements. The City of Brighton, the story that I heard was that there's nothing backing that up. They just passed an ordinance at the $1.75 because they had some things that they were facing at one point in time. And so that's how that started out. They haven't gone back and done this kind of work to figure out what they really need. So some of those, yeah, they're a little bit different. And when you look at the entire Front Range in another slide that we showed you last time, it showed where the $6 is more comparable to the entire Front Range and not just this very local snapshot.
And so, correct me if I'm wrong, but out of that 3.4 million, only half of that would we be able to put into these projects? Because the rest would be spent for administrative costs or?
Half of it would go into capital improvements. The other half would go into maintenance. Maintenance is the big component of that.
Okay.
Maintenance of our existing system.
Okay. Do you, can you speculate what percentage of that would be the cost of just implementing the program and running the program and collecting the money and?
We don't think it's any more than about $100,000.
Okay. And do all cities go through having it put on the taxes? Is that the way they're all collecting it? Or are some collecting it in a different manner?
It's really probably more so with their own billing systems.
With their water bills?
Right. A lot of these cities have their own utilities, which makes it very convenient to collect it on that sort of basis. We did go to the Water District several times and have discussions with them. They weren't interested in working with us on doing the billing for us. A couple of other places, like the Southeast Metro Stormwater Association, they're billing through Adams and, or Arapaho and Douglas County. We're talking with Adams County now. They're planning on going that same direction. So it is something that's been tried and works in the metro area.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Macaldoney.
Thanks very much. I appreciate the update. This is one of those topics that seems to stick in my memory from my very first budget meeting in 2007. And I remember asking a lot of questions about how the funding was working today, especially in light of the question that Mr. Moreno asked earlier about, well, how are we funding this today? And are we in compliance today? And the piece that I recall really settling in with me was, we're essentially spending money out of the general fund to cover necessary projects, or we're hoping to do projects someday, i.e. this list, that we don't have a guaranteed revenue stream for. And we all on this council talked last fall at length about, and in prior budget discussions, about just how little we have in the way of dollars to fund the number of road projects that we want to fund, the municipal improvements that we need to fund from an expansion of city facilities perspective. And then there are these costs associated with the maintenance and the actual infrastructure, establishing new infrastructure for stormwater. And we have the Quality Community Foundation underway right now to look at ways to help generate revenue to cover some of those investments in terms of community infrastructure. And this has been sort of singled out because there is a unique way to fund this, right? I mean, this is the tool. And I think the key point that you've touched on a few times is, there is no one-size-fits-all recipe for how to approach this. Everyone has the same obligation, but each of the communities, it seems, have taken different approaches in how they use a utility, stormwater authority, what have you, to cover the costs to perform the services essentially, right? So I guess the bottom line in my mind is, we can choose not to do this, or we can choose to do this. Either way, we have to fund these projects, and we have to fund this maintenance. If we choose not to do this, then we put in direct competition the cost of maintaining these things and the cost of building these things with the parks that we want and the roads that we want and the other facilities that we need to build. We can instead structure this authority to put a very small fee in front of our residences. I understand the concerns about not being average or, I think that number is deceptive. And I think it would be helpful to look at some of that past data that you've shown us that shows, I think, more accurately how we fit in and also the nature of what that fee covers. Because you've given some good color commentary tonight where the fee covers just this, but there are other pieces that they're having to fund, but they're coming out of their general fund. So they may be in a different position, and that's okay for them. I guess the other thing that comes to mind when I look at some of the more intensive users, the property types, right? I mean, these are heavily developed, as we heard, properties where there's essentially no permeability on that site. So everything that hits the ground has to go somewhere. So it makes sense, they're going to pay more. Where you look at a residential property or one of the larger residential properties, most of that property is permeable. And so you're, I mean, I guess it makes sense. And I assume that the analysis that's taken place has looked at the intensity of those users, the area that that user fits. And I think one of the things that I recall from a past discussion that you touched on was, again, the age of the infrastructure in certain parts of the community. And the lack of permeability in certain parts of the community creates a greater challenge than the example that Mr. Douglas gave, perhaps in the Northern Range, where we've built outside of floodplains. We've got the big drainage areas. I mean, we certainly still have problems like you've talked about on Chambers. But I guess, to me, it's, maybe I've been through this talk enough now that it just completely makes sense. But we either do it through this process or we continue to try and pull together the nickels and dimes to make it happen and rob from other things that we might want to be solving for. So I don't know. Are those fair assumptions or fair interpretations based on what I'm saying, what I'm hearing?
Very accurate.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno.
Just to echo some of Councilman Macaldoney's comments, I think this council has been really hesitant to, well, this council and the previous councils, honestly, to pull the trigger on any of these large-scale projects that we actually have to do. And I think at some point, we just have to, we have to do it. I mean, these are projects that are out there. They're in need of funding of some sort. You know, how we get there is obviously up for debate, but these aren't optional projects in any way. We have to fund them somehow. I do get what Councilwoman Carson brought up. I think, Councilwoman Carson, I think we do, I would say that, looking at other municipalities and stormwater agencies, we are, I think, a little on the high end. And I think that's something that we can negotiate going forward. Are we anticipating that this fee would be a permanent fee? At some point, and I understand that it would raise 3.4 a year. A lot of that is maintenance. Some of that goes to capital improvement projects. is maintenance, some of that goes to capital improvement projects, but just looking at the top 10, I mean, are there more than these capital projects that are on this slide that we need to do?
Yes, there are a lot more projects that we need to do in terms of building out the system. We targeted a 20-year horizon, that's typical for planning and that, and it kind of begins to help set up a number that's sustainable going forward. And so over time, yeah, there would be adjustments for inflation, and then we would continue to add and plan that 20-year horizon as we go forward, so that it would be never-ending as far as the fee goes. We're always going to have to, what we build today, we're going to have to maintain tomorrow. So you're just, you'll shift it from capital side to the maintenance side. So that's, that'll always grow.
Well, that was, I guess, thank you for that. I guess my question in asking that was, if there would be at some point where the fee actually reduces because there's not as many capital improvement projects, but it doesn't sound like with the occurrence of development and going forward in the future, that that's not really something that would happen.
Just to add to that, the infrastructure ages, so, you know, stuff that's 30, 40 years old already, has to be replaced at some point in the future. So even though you may build out everything, you don't need to go back and renew and upgrade.
Just going back to what Councilwoman Carson brought up, I do think if we reduce the fee, which I'm not in any way in opposition to, if we did reduce the fee, we would just have to realize that that does push out the time span in which we can complete the projects. It lessens the amount of money that we would bring in each year, and then therefore the projects would take longer to complete.
Mr. Douglas.
Sorry, just wanted to add something to here. I said earlier, you know, it sounds like we have a balancing act here, because is there any way, or do you guys have a map that shows the areas that you've been monitoring, some of the more moderate improvements and some that are major improvements, and then the pipes? Show an outline of our city, where the pipes are, show the areas where it's less concerned, some in the middle and some major. I mean, we need to see, I'd like to see, I'd like this council to see, what you guys are working off, a map of the city, of Commerce City, to show the pipes, how the flow's going, the areas that, as far as, you know, years, you know, and the ones that are, that right now don't need as far as being replaced. Maintenance-wise, what the cost of maintenance is, and in the area where the maintenance is, how much are we spending in maintenance right now? I mean, we have this analysis here and all that, but I don't see a map of the city that shows where we, where these improvements are most needed, because maybe we don't start out at $5, maybe we start at $2, and work our way up based on the needs of the area that needs to be replaced, plus the maintenance involved.
Some of that, we can work on a map next time that shows where the capital improvements are that we're proposing, and also code in the other improvements that we're not showing. As far as some of the detail you're talking about, it's not broken down in terms of the maintenance, that specifically, it's just, that's how much we spend across the entire city, and so we don't break it down like that.
Okay, well, I think we should look at something like that, because I have to answer to the citizens and see if it makes sense, if we had illustration, a map that shows our city, and how, you know, how the growth has happened, and what's already in place, and what needs to be replaced, would really help. Because we can sit and talk about this on a study session, but, you know, and go out and show this to the citizens, but we need to show them on a map exactly what we're doing, and how this project's going to start, and how it's going to play out in the future, because, it's very important, because if things aren't done right, you know, that fee could double.
We can show on a map the capital improvement projects that we need and that we're proposing. What I'm saying is, as far as the tracking on the maintenance side, you know, that's the street sweeping that we do throughout half the year, the inlet cleaning that goes on throughout the city. So we don't track that by each little area or component, it's the sweeping program, it's the inlet cleaning program. So those programs are citywide, we don't look at them in any kind of concentrated detail.
Well, I don't mean in that detail so much, but I just, you know, I mean, you could, like, the major areas could be in red, with, you know, as far as the flow goes, in the green, you know, moderate, and then yellow, the ones that really just need to be monitored.
We can do that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Macaldonie.
I seem to remember, and again, it's probably been in one of the prior presentations, where you talked about some of that, because I think, again, I think it's having that more detailed understanding of how the pieces come together. I seem to remember past comments that you've made where, for example, the street sweeping is something we have to do, and I don't think most citizens connect street sweeping with the role that it plays in terms of this stormwater maintenance. And if we don't do it, and we don't do it frequently enough and at the right times, then we clog up our drains, and then it creates a problem when we get a big storm. And obviously, that has different impacts in different places of the city, but I guess to take that further, we're going to have street sweeping, we need to do street sweeping, you can budget it out of the general fund, or you define that it plays a specific role in your stormwater adherence, and therefore you budget it and program it into this dollar amount. So I guess, I guess the point is, we've had lots of these discussions over time, not everybody up here has been part of all of those discussions, and I wonder if part of what needs to come back is sort of around two of this discussion, is just a little bit more of that detail, because I know you guys have it, and just help everybody sort of get to that same page. Because again, I think Steve's right, we need to be able to help be an advocate for this. It makes great sense to me, I want to make sure that it makes great sense to everybody up here, and that we can talk about how this is a good news story, and a good direction, and a good strategy for the community. You know, Dominic was spot on, in that there are some things that aren't so sexy and sort of cool, but need to happen. But by doing this, we free up capital in the budget to do other things, right? We get to do a little bit more on the capital projects front, we free up and shrink departmental budgets, because those are now going to get funded where appropriate out of these dollars. And so I guess, to me, it's just helpful if we could find a way to help paint that picture more clearly, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. Some of the things that we're talking about now, you'll see in June.
Okay, cool.
In our next presentation. We'll bring back and we'll backfill that.
Awesome.
With some of the information that we presented before.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Moreno.
Just one last thing, and maybe I misunderstood Councilman Macaldonie, but the street sweeping aspect, would that appropriation then be removed from the Public Works Department budget and be covered by this?
Yes, it would. Street sweeping is really a water quality issue, not so much keeping the inlets from being clogged, it's a water quality issue, because tires, as you run down the road, tires wear, and nobody thinks about that, but when they sweep, that's what they're sweeping up, is a lot of what comes off of the cars, and so it's a water quality issue that we're actually addressing there, and that would go into the stormwater utility as far as funding would go.
Do you have a number of how much we pay towards street sweeping currently?
Not in front of me, but we will have it for the next, we've got that one, definitely. In the budget, street sweeping is its own project and fund, so, yeah, we can get that real easy.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I could tell you that I don't like this at all, and I'm going to explain why. And I think most of you have heard me say it before, I do think this has the potential to pass and be implemented. However, these are services that have been provided for many years with the tax dollars collected from the citizens, and when we start adding fees, I think that's a way to circumvent the American tax system. If we need the money, and we have projects that are necessary, we need to go to the voters and ask for them, if they feel that their money that they're willing to contribute is worth the projects at hand, I think that they should have the right to have input on how they're being taxed. Street sweeping, what's, you know, the water quality pieces, I understand why we need it. However, what's next, are we going to start charging for maintenance and electrical bill for the streetlights? It can go on and on and on. I think, long-term, we need to have, you go out and you get the citizens to buy into what you're trying to sell them, and they need to be comfortable with paying the additional taxes. And just because I think this has the potential to be approved, I need to ask some questions. If I own a five-acre, I own a five-acre mobile home park, am I similar to what I saw in there, $500 and some dollars a month, that could be assessed to me in the form of that fee? Over the years, talking about the tax rebate for the seniors, the senior tax rebate program, the average city portion property tax that was collected was about $72 a month, and that was a huge effect on a large portion of our senior residents, and this would, in fact, be about $72 a month if they were in the standard, single-family residential detached product. I don't mind paying $6, $7 a month, but there's some people in this community that that will have a hardship on, even more so if it's collected on a biannual or annual basis instead of on a monthly basis. You did mention that you talked to the Water District about billing through the Water District. However, I happen to know somebody on the Board of Directors, and I asked them, how come the Water District's unwilling to talk to us and try to work out a way for us to do this billing on a monthly basis to have ease on our customers, who the customers are the same for both the district and the city in the most part? And that board member told me they have never seen it before, so the discussions must fall only within staff, and I think as we're proceeding, I would like to have a representative of the city, even if it's me, talk to the Board of Directors of the Water District and find out if we can get a better deal on the billing, and if we can go to a monthly scenario versus a biannual or annual scenario, because if this passes, I want it to have the least impact on our residents that is possible. But I do feel it's a hidden tax, and am not supportive at this point of what I've seen.
Mr. Moreno.
I think that was from before, but I will agree that I think we should approach the Water District and see if there's a way that we can work that out, particularly if it hasn't elevated to the level of the actual governing body of the organization, then maybe we should explore that. I will say that I think this is where maybe we get into a little bit of the political differences between you and I, Mr. Mayor. I believe that residents empower their elected officials to make these decisions on their behalf, and it's us, it's the elected officials, local elected officials that see every day what it costs to fund some of the projects in our community. And so, it's just a difference in philosophy, I think, and I do think that the residents do want us to make sure that we have a well-funded program in the city, that we fund the projects that we need to complete, so, but I do agree that we should approach the Water District again, and see if we can work out something. I do agree that a monthly billing would be preferable to twice a year on a tax statement, so.
Well, thank you, everybody, for their comments, and thank you for your presentation, but I see no other discussion.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda will be the Land Development Code amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just to make a brief introduction, as Paul comes back up here. This project is kind of an annual event, if you will, for those of you that have been on council before. With the advent of the Land Development Code, every year we find some, I don't want to say errors, but, you know, things that just aren't working quite right, oversights, things like that, and so we end up doing a couple dozen amendments every year. And so I'm going to have Paul Workman go through his presentation and take any questions, yeah?
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Hayes, appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, it's good to be back here again this evening. I will try and keep this presentation fairly brief in order to spend some time for discussion, but as Mr. Hayes mentioned, it is customary for the city to process a set of updates or amendments or modifications to our current Land Development Code, also known as the LDC. This presentation is the study session item that will be subsequently followed by the formal resolution that will adopt the changes. With that, we'll get started. As was mentioned, the Land Development Code was originally adopted in early 2009, it went into effect shortly after that, and it's been updated in 2010 and 2011, this is customary for us to do. In general, the Land Development Code has been a huge improvement to help ensure quality, consistent, fast development throughout our city. The Land Development Code always has been and will continue to be a living document. Monitoring of our code has occurred since the very first day, and that will continue. One of our major goals is to ensure that our rules and regulations continue to meet the needs of the community. In order to do that, periodic amendments are necessary to ensure that that document continues to meet those needs. Additional updates will be necessary in the future, council should expect to see those, and this certainly won't be the last round of minor amendments. So this round of amendments is to ensure that the code continues to reflect the needs of the community. As was mentioned, the last couple of years, the city's processed a couple dozen amendments. They mostly focus on minor additions or deletions, clarifications of existing regulations, and anything that's identified in order to modernize, keep the code modern. An important note is that major amendments to the Land Development Code are not a part of this process, so things like updates to the sign ordinance, or the alcohol ordinance, or oil and gas regulations, those are handled separately on an individual basis for individual comment and review from City Council. Again, these amendments are intended to be housekeeping, minor in nature, in order to keep the Land Development Code efficient. This year, the amendments fall into four general categories. The first is legal clarification, the second is to align the Land Development Code with some of the cities' adopted building codes, and then also, as mentioned, to keep the code modern, and then continue to meet any needs that have been identified by the community. It's also important to note that no properties will be rezoned as part of this process, all properties will maintain their current zoning, this will have no impact on that. As we jump into the individual sections here, on the dais this evening, there was a table that was placed on the table in front of you. It has the, all of the proposed amendments, along with draft language. Staff did have a very in-depth study session with Planning Commission earlier this month, and we will be going back to Planning Commission for a formal adoption hearing in May, so certainly feel free to follow along in that table and in that text. But essentially, the first category, again, is for legal clarification. These are amendments that, for whatever reason, align language in the code, they revise definitions in order to better meet the true intent of the regulation, things of that nature, very minor, just clarifying language-type stuff. The second category is to align the Land Development Code with the Building Code. As council, I'm sure, is aware, future amendments, the adoption of the 2009 Building Codes are forthcoming. The intent is to align the Land Development Code both with the existing Building Codes and those 2009 Building Codes. Essentially, it's redundant to have rules and regulations in both codes, and it can lead to discrepancies over time, so in order to align those two documents, some of those amendments have been proposed. The medias portion of this round of updates is to modernize the code. This is substantial in order to keep the code relevant and meeting the needs of the community, both residential, commercial, and industrial. It includes things like clarifying where certain uses are allowed, what certain regulations incorporate, what uses are allowed where, some of that sort of stuff. Again, this middle section is the medias section, it does include some additional regulations. is the media section. It does include some additional regulations, as you can see from the slides here. There are some proposed regulations for, you know, barn and stable regula- design, some materials they have to use, and things of that nature, that, that really try and, and continue to meet the needs of the community. The fourth and, and final general category is, through the course of time, through the course of the last year, through the development review process, through building permit review, through meetings with council, through meetings with citizens, things of that nature, certain items have come up, and staff has tried to incorporate those into this round of Land Development Codes. Specifically, the, you know, having the ability to have a community garden in our, in our city has long been a request of our citizens. It was at this time that, that, that movement has been carried forward, and, and that's, those general categories are intended to include those sorts of items. The schedule, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission study session was in, fairly in-depth, and that was held a few weeks ago. And then this evening is the study session with City Council. Moving forward, we currently have a scheduled Planning Commission meeting for May 1st in order to discuss the proposed amendments in detail once again. And then, as mentioned, June 4th of this year, these amendments will come before council for adoption. Certainly, this is not the only opportunity for council input, or clarification, or questions, or anything of that nature. You have the, the draft language, again, that is draft language, that is not final. If there are any questions, or issues, or concerns, or anything of that nature, certainly let staff, staff know so we can address that as part of our, as part of our process. But that would include, that would conclude the, the short presentation about this 2012 round of Land Development Code updates, but as always, certainly staff's available to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Workman, thanks for your presentation. Regarding the community garden amendments to the Land Development Code, have we consulted at all with folks that have community gardens currently in the city?
Yes, sir, we have. We've consulted with Bell Creek, the, uh, community garden that's located in Derby, Tri-County Health has been involved. So we've, we've gone through and identified about five or six organizations or folks that currently implement community gardens in, in order to kind of get some best practices and, and some thoughts on, on what has worked well for them, and some things of that nature.
Great. And then regarding the amendment on detached garages, so if I'm understanding the amendment correctly, it basically states that if it's not in public view, the structure doesn't have to necessarily be the same, I guess, construction as the principal structure?
The, the, to back up just a bit, right now, the Land Development Code requires that when you have a primary structure that has brick, stone, a, a, any sort of masonry stucco, if you have a detached garage, your garage is required to be covered in the same amount of brick, stone, masonry, stucco, things of that nature, regardless of whether or not it's visible from the right-of-way. That has become a severe impediment to creating a detached garage structure. So the, this amendment was based on community input and requests from the citizenry in order to try and make that a little more customer service-friendly. So the, the regulation you have in front of you tries to identify for those scenarios where the facades will be visible from the right-of-way, and if there is brick, masonry, some sort of masonry treatment on that primary structure, then the portion of the detached garage that's visible from public right-of-way would have to have a base of a similar masonry, brick, stone, something of that nature.
Okay. 'Cause just, particularly in the core city, I have heard from a few residents that it is, it is a burden to, I mean, these are, these are most, for the most part, old kind of brick homes, that in the situation that they do, and many do wanna put in a garage rather than a carport, that the requirement that at least a portion of that continue to be brick is somewhat cost prohibitive for some folks, but this will only address detached garages and not attached garages, correct?
That's correct. If, if, there's no proposed change to an attached garage. If your attached garage, if you, if your primary structure has brick, stone, masonry, something of that nature, if you do an attached garage, that attached garage would have to be covered in the same percentage as your primary structure.
So for example, if someone has a, a brick home that's 100% brick-built, does that mean that the attached garage has to be 100% brick as well?
The front facade of it would have to be. Does that make sense? So the facade that would be visible from the pub- public right-of-way would be required to, but the additional sides would not be required to be.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman McElhany?
Just curious on, were there any key areas of concern or other discussion with the Planning Commission, or was that, anything to call out from that?
Sure. There were, there were a couple items that warranted a little more discussion than some others. The first was on the community gardens. There is a provision in there that there's no growing or cultivating of marijuana, whether it be for medical purposes or not. So that was an item that we've added in. In addition, there was a lot of discussion related to pole construction, and specifically, you know, sort of what does that mean and what impacts does that have for our community? In general, at the end of that conversation, our Planning Commission was confident in the additional regulations that have been added to, to that section, as well as the definition. That language will be identified and warrant further discussion in Planning Commission. However, we feel strongly that they will be comfortable with what we've written. And then in addition to that, to follow-up on Mr. Moreno's question, the brick, masonry requirement on detached garages, those were the areas that had the three most conversation. We're confident that we've addressed those concerns, and as part of the Planning Commission hearing, they'll be supportive.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
I just have a quick question about the sandblasting.
Yes, ma'am.
And I could be wrong, but I thought that was one of the processes they used to, like, remove graffiti off cinder blocks or cement, or...
I'll be honest, I'm not real sure how that process works. What this is intended to get at is, a lot of automotive, or boat, or things of that nature, it's part of a sandblasting and painting process, so it removes, you know, the exterior of a vehicle or a boat, or an RV, or something of that nature before they prime and paint. So this is intended to get at that particular use.
So if, if it was a process used to remove graffiti, we wouldn't be getting in the way of that?
No, no, ma'am. We would certainly try and to encourage them to remove that.
Mr. Douglas?
On, on the community gardens, what about property, 'cause not, not meant for, on anyone's property, but what about property the city owns, would the, just, just be covered underneath that?
That is correct, yeah. The, these regulations would apply to public or private property. Now, as the property owner, the city would have the ability to, you know, grant the approval for somebody to use that, but it would still be governed by these set of regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one further, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda, Mile High Greyhound Park Redevelopment Project, and Deputy Interim City Manager Hayes to begin presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's the Mile High Greyhound Park Redevelopment Project update. Been doing this every couple of months, so I'm gonna run through this pretty quickly and try to hit the, the highlights of the new information. Again, who is the URA? This is largely for the benefit of the public that may be watching. Urban Renewal Authority is the City Council in Commerce City, with the, the mayor serving as the chairman of the board. The city manager serves as the executive director for the staff perspective. Again, the, the property map, 64th on the north, 62nd on the south, Holly on the east, and Highway 285 split on the, the west side. There is a one policy issue we're gonna be requesting some direction or feedback on tonight. We've developed a donation policy or procedure, if you will, for disposition of, of property, and I'll get to that in just a minute. Overall, this presentation will also continue to inform some future policy decisions regarding redevelopment of the site and the budget that we're gonna have to have some discussion about in a couple of months. So first of all, let me give you a quick update on building abatement and demolition, and when we get into questions, I believe I still see Darren here, so he can answer, answer those. He's taking the lead on the project for the city. The Urban Renewal did contract with D'Nardo Consulting to manage the demolition. They're operating essentially as an owner's representative for us. There's a Phase One that will be completed in May, which will include an ALTA survey showing all the utilities, environmental testing, and an abatement cost report. There will also be some bid documents for demolition and walkthrough for six pre-qualified contractors. One of the big components that we've heard throughout this, this process from contractors, from people that, for example, demolished the Cloverleaf Dog Track in Loveland, is make sure and test for the asbestos as much as you can, and the, and the lead-based paint and things like that. That's where you run into some serious cost overruns if you're not careful with that. So happy to report our public works department's taking that to heart with this contract with Mr. D'Nardo. Donation procedures, we've received three specific inquiries for items inside the building and on the exterior. Number one is from the Historical Society. We conducted a walkthrough with them last fall, and they went ahead and took some items already, and, and they've documented which those, which items those were. They were things they could remove easily by walking, walking out of the building. We've got a list of those things from them. The second is from Prairie View High School. Excuse me, let me go back to the Historical Society for a minute. They have provided us a new list of things that they would prefer to, to be removed from the building that will take a little more labor. These include things that are simple to remove, like signs and furniture, but then there are also more complex things like freestanding safes, ticket windows, etched glass, things that need to be physically removed from the property. We're trying to be very careful in how we manage that part of the process, because again, we've got asbestos issues. We need to make sure we coordinate that with our, our contractor, and he's put together some preliminary cost estimates just based on, on their list. Prairie View High School, we were contacted several months ago by one of the coaches on the baseball team that wanted to get the lights that are around the track, and they also wanted some bleachers, they wanted an old piece of lawn equipment. They were willing to come over and get it right-of-way, of course, and so we're trying to hold them off, and again, until we can determine what's the best approach to getting those materials out to them, and frankly, if they have any value, or if it's gonna be more trouble than they're worth for the, the school to put those up at their baseball facility. Lastly, was a dog rescue group that wanted some kennels and some grates and things like that. We think those are pretty minor, but, but again, we're gonna have to coordinate with the, the demolition contractor before we can give that stuff away. So we have developed a procedure. We are gonna be requesting some feedback when we get into the discussion tonight. We are in Phase One, essentially, where the Historical Society and the high school and the dog rescue group have provided a list of items that they're looking for. We would like to coordinate removal of that with the demolition contractor, rather than having a, a bunch of volunteers traipsing through the building on a Saturday morning or something. We just don't think it's very safe to do that. The challenge here, as we get into Phase Two, is that those additional costs, we think, should be borne by the recipient of the materials. And if that includes paying extra labor, we may need to pu- push some of those costs off to some of the recipients unless it's something that the council or the Urban Renewal Authority wants to bear that cost. Let me shift gears to visioning and the land use update. We've developed two preliminary land use concepts, and really, these are for different purposes. I'll talk about the NIAP student challenge that's going on parallel to this, but we were getting up against it here with the International Council of Shopping Centers Conference coming up at the end of May. We had to come up with some marketing collateral. Before we could just go down there and talk to developers and retailers, we had to show them a pretty picture of what the site could be. So we developed an idea with the west half, could be retail, hospitality type uses, again, 'cause that's the focus of that conference, but I think we were being realistic in saying we're not gonna put 65 acres of retail on the site. So we, on the east side, we came up with some open space, a mix of housing types, a spot for the Boys and Girls Club. So now I'll show this picture, and I, I cannot put concept only in, you know, enough times on there, because I can guarantee it will not look exactly like this when we develop it. But it really was just to show what the potential is. We showed a lot of retail, some sit-down restaurants, hotel, open space plaza around the hotel, movie theater, big box, office buildings, and then the mix of housing types as you get further east with the Boys and Girls Club down in the, the lower right-hand corner. Again, a, a kind of concept of what it could look like, what we're trying to get at with some of the, the folks we'll be talking to next month. It's real hard to see in there, but in the, the center of the fountain, there, there's some kids playing, and there'd be a, a Greyhound statue on top of the, the little fountain there, so. Just to, again, get a feel and, and pay some homage to, to what was on the site before. The second site plan is, is less developed, so much so that we don't have a, even a drawing for you. But again, the, the thought there is that we're focusing on maybe an educational use, primary employer anchor on the west side. That could be R&amp;D, could be office, could be healthcare. We're really not sure exactly yet, but there would be some kind of focus that wouldn't be totally retail on the west side. There'd still be some retail that would fill in, that would, you know, feed off of those anchor uses, and then the rest of it, we, would be, again, single-family, multi-, excuse me, multifamily, mix of housing types as we go further to the east. So the EDA grant, you approved that, I believe, last month, accepting that grant from the Department of Commerce. Just to clarify, I think there was some confusion in the council packet last time about the numbers. There's $140,000 that will be available for market feasibility and sub-area planning. $70,000 is from the grant, $40,000 will be cash, and then $30,000 of staff time. And so from the date you approved that grant, we've been tracking our staff time, and, and we'll be able to get credit for all that work we're putting in as part of the grant. We're gonna use that money then to further refine, test the market for these preliminary land use plans, and again, those will be updated throughout the summer. Boys and Girls Club, again, a formal agreement has been prepared by the city attorney. It's currently under review by the Boys and Girls Club attorney. We think that we're really close on, on that agreement, just a couple minor issues. They would just wanna make sure we've got some, you know, environment, environmental clearances on the site before they, they proceed with the signatures, but we're very close. They're gonna commence then some preliminary designs and use those for fundraising efforts, and then we'll integrate those concepts into the larger plan for the project. The NIAP challenge, they are almost done. We're in the home stretch here. I attended the internal judging at CU on April 12th and at DU on April 13th. Some very interesting concepts. There were five teams that came up with ideas. The final two will be at the event on May 2nd, and I was happy to see that the student teams really identified some of the land uses that we've included in our concept plans, and they've come up with some, some new ones as well, which I think you'll be interested to see in, in about 10 days. ICSC, again, I mentioned this already, our formal marketing collateral is completed. We're still in the process of setting formal appointments with potential developers, retailers, and hotel operators. We'll provide an update to the council after the conference as to how we, how we do and the number of appointments we have, and we met with Mayor Ford and the ED team last week to talk about our preliminary schedule for that weekend. Lastly, I save this the best for last. The, the budget, again, the URA received a $4 million loan from the city for the purchase and operating expenditures related to the, the park. Approximately 3.5 million has been spent to date. That was 3.3 on the purchase, and I'll run through the, the additional funds we've spent so far. But clearly, additional funds will be needed for abatement and demolition, so we can talk about that in just a moment. Here's the breakdown of the expenditures. The good news with this slide is that a lot of this, we don't ent- The good news with this slide is that a lot of this, we don't anticipate are going to be recurring costs. Property purchase, of course, is a sunk cost. That's a done deal at this point. We, of course, had to pay the taxes for the time we didn't owe it. That bill came due early this year, before it went into a tax-exempt status. Security, that contract ended at the end of March. The police department is still providing security for the site, but we ended our outside contract at the end of March. The outreach is directly related to the postage, the mailings, the NIAP kickoff event we had here, things like that. Maintenance and utilities, again, the utilities are shut off, the building has been winterized, there's no power, there's no water, anything like that to the building. Maintenance is really the exterior of the building that we were maintaining with some of the tree trimming, mowing of the parking lot. Let that sink in for a minute, we had to mow the parking lot with all the weeds. Outside expertise, this, again, is a lot of sunk costs. We've had Mr. Benedetti, who's been our URA attorney, that we've been paying to assist us with this boundary adjustment, that will continue through the summer. Mark Goldberg has stayed on as a consultant for us. He's been helping us with our planning efforts. And then, of course, the major cost, there was the CIG contract for the outreach that we did, again, which ended in November of last year. NIAP sponsorship, again, was $40,000 that we did pay for the NIAP sponsorship, and the key that we're getting out of that is the PR, the recognition. We're getting all of the work product from all these students, which includes detailed pro formas about how these projects could actually be implemented, which I found to be the most valuable, better than even just the site plans. So future meetings, again, we have the awards dinner for NIAP on May 2nd. May 7th, we'll be coming back to the city council for a first reading on the boundary amendment. Again, this is to essentially restart the clock on the Dog Track site, so we can have a full 25 years of TIF available to us as a redevelopment option. June 4th will be the second reading on a resolution adopting the condition survey and the blight findings that the staff showed you a couple months ago. We're also planning, then, on coming back a couple times in June to give you more details in a study session on the demolition and the abatement. We should have more hard numbers at that point. And then, as I mentioned, we will need to do some type of budget amendment. The URA will essentially be requesting another loan from the city to help pay for some of those demolition costs. And with that, I'm open to answer any questions.
Mr. Douglas, your lights on? Do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, that's from last time, but I'll go ahead. For that abatement, the consultant we used for it, what's the cost on that?
Yes, that's $40,000 for that.
Okay, and then, since the city's going there to the ICSC, is Cronky going to be there at the ISC pushing their site as well?
Yes, absolutely. You probably noticed the signs when you come in. Mark Lucas, who is with Jones Lang LaSalle, was one of the brokers on this property. Within the last few weeks, he has been hired as the director of real estate for Cronky Sports and Entertainment. So they brought that in-house, essentially. He's currently interviewing brokers, and then we're going to have at least one appointment with him down there and potentially many more if he's able to get those set up.
Okay, because, you know, we first took the seat here, things were going pretty fast, we had Cronky, they came with a presentation, and then we had the continuing presentation on Dog Track. You know, and then, after hearing what Cronky wants to do with the office space and, you know, and the planned retail, you know, I think we have to look at what we're doing here as far as competing for the same thing. We're going to have a lot of retail space here, and right now, we have some retail right around the Keen Supers that used to be there, and now they're just empty sites. So I think we need to be, you know, think carefully what we want to have on there eventually. I mean, I know this is just a presentation, and a lot of stuff has to come together to make sure it fits for our city. So with that, I mean, you know, we're going to have a lot of retail space here with Cronky and that, so that's kind of competing against each other.
Absolutely. I mean, we hope they will complement each other, but the trade areas are very similar, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, do we have a ballpark figure at all of what demolition might cost?
I'm hesitant to say. I can tell you what we told the students and what I understand from the Loveland project. The Loveland project, which is the Cloverleaf Dog Track demolition, I spoke to John Shaw from McWhinney, he was actually one of the judges at the student event, and he said they're about $2 million right now. And part of the reason is because they didn't do the asbestos testing sufficiently upfront. They found some block fill that caused a delay and more labor costs than they were anticipating. Given that, when we did the RFP for the students, we told them to use a $6 million number to make the city whole. We used $4 million of the initial loan and used $2 million for demolition. So that was kind of the starting point that we used with them when we had them do the RFP.
And do, right now, we're in the phase of soliciting proposals, correct? Or we've done that and we've selected a company?
I'll let Darren talk about the specifics, but essentially, we've got an owner's representative that is helping us, and we have six pre-qualified contractors at this point.
We've got, as Jim said, we've got six pre-qualified contractors for the demolition, and we've got a similar number for the abatement. And all of the numbers are in on those bids right now. The consultant is currently evaluating those to make sure that we're talking apples and apples. Contractors see things differently, they put things in different places, so we're making sure that their number is right, whether it's high or low. What do you have going on? So the consultants are trying to understand what everybody's bid is saying right now. When he's done with that process, then we'll be ready to come back and present a real hard number to you.
Thank you. And regarding an additional loan from the city, will that discussion occur during, I imagine, a budget retreat, or have we identified a source?
We have not identified a source yet. I'll be working with the finance director, so that when we come back in a couple months, we'll have some options for the city to consider.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes. Are any of the three candidates that have been reconsidered suggesting that during the stage of demolition, that they are taking salvage and using that as an offset of demolition?
Components of the demolition do include some salvage, primarily the big steel is what's been identified as the real salvageable material that the demolition contractors want. The amount of effort required to get things like copper out of there is really labor-intensive and not profitable for the contractor to deal with, so it's basically the big steel, and then they're also looking at some of the concrete.
Okay, so they aren't looking at any of the internal items that any of the different groups would be looking at, like the Historical Society of Prairie View as salvageable items or antiques or anything like that? Because there are some items in the Dog Track that are valuable, but they're valuable from a sentimental antique value. That isn't a consideration?
No, those items aren't, the poles for the lights might be, because there's a lot of steel in those, but that's not, right now, we're programming that as something to deal with the school first, school issue first, and then we'll, if they don't end up with them, then they'll go off to salvage.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Is there any way we could, you know, most of the stuff, I know the Historical Society wants some of those items, if we did, because a lot of folks came to my Dog Track, you know, for fun and all that, is there a way we could pull some of those items out and maybe do an auction as part of, you know, funding some of that?
We've actually talked about that internally, and we think it'd probably be more trouble than it's worth. It's very labor-intensive, you're going to have an auction, the auctioneer's going to take a certain percentage of that. We think there are things of value in there for the Historical Society. We think there's some mementos, namely the dog silks, there's some, you know, etched glass and things that could be given as mementos for people that worked on the project and for council members and things like that, but you add that, and then the salvage, we think it's probably just better not to go down that auction route.
Okay.
But I'd leave it up to the council if you want to give that policy direction, we can look into it further.
We know that we could, I mean, there's a lot of items over there.
Saying no one else, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you here in a couple months.
Thank you. I just had one other item I just remembered regarding the tour. You had asked about the possibility of having a tour. I've got a couple of dates. We'd prefer to pick one if we can, but I know you're all very busy. We've got either Saturday, May 5th, or Saturday, May 19th, at 10 o'clock in the morning, where we could host a tour of council members, and if, you know, if we want to have special guests, we could probably do that, too. Just the comments that we need, you know, liability release form sign, hard hats, which we'll provide, bring your own flashlight, even though it'll be during the day, there's no power, so there are a lot of dark spaces, and then no open-toed shoes, and make sure you have hard soles, because it is somewhat hazardous in there. So we can discuss that under administrative council business if you want, or we can do that right now.
Will the council have a preference on what, Saturday, the 5th or the 19th? Mr. Moreno?
I'll be out of town for the 5th, so if May 19th works for everyone else, I prefer that date.
Does anybody have any concerns with the 19th?
We'll be out of town on the 19th in Manhattan, Kansas. I was preferring the 5th.
California.
You know, can we do two? I mean, would this be a hardship on staff?
I don't think so. We can make two work.
Okay.
All right, we'll let the staff figure it out and let us know when we're going.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is administrative council business. We do have a few items. First, the attorney should make a motion to change the start time of May 7th to 5:30 to accommodate the executive session. You want to talk about that real quick?
All right, that's, the purpose of that motion by the council would be that we have an executive session scheduled for that night, so to avoid calling a special meeting. If you make a motion to move the start time for the regular meeting to 5:30 rather than 6:30, it would save us calling a special meeting. So a motion would be in order to do that for May the 7th.
Mr. Bullock?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that.
A motion is second to move the start time to 5:30 on the May 7th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next thing on administrative business, I received a letter from the Regional Air Quality Council, and it's the lead agency for air quality planning for seven-county Denver metro region. The governor appoints the members to represent a broad range of community in the region. He's currently have a vacancy and looking for a representative from the north metro area, and is asking if there's anyone on our council that would like to apply and be considered for the governor's air quality council, the regional air quality council. So is there anyone on this council that has an interest in doing?
You know, the mayor was the last representative on that council.
Really?
Yes, I think the mayor on this should be the next representative.
I'm glad you think that. You know, I got the letter, and I thought, I'm going to do the right thing and ask the council if there's somebody that has an interest in it. Jim, you got your hand up over there? No?
I'll do it.
Do you need a volunteer, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying, I wanted to offer to the council.
If no one else wants to do it, I'll do it.
And I said the same thing, if, I'll step forward. Okay, well, I'm going to give this to the staff, and I guess you can put Jim and Renee down as, and Steve down as potential representatives.
Okay, then I'll drop out, and it'll be Jim and Steve.
What are the dates on that? I mean, what's the first one?
It doesn't say. It doesn't say. It just says the deadline for applications is May 4th, and they're asking for a council member to participate.
Okay.
So I don't know what the days they meet, but I have a pretty full ticket the way it is, and I would prefer that a council member, if we have one that would like to, to pursue being the member. So I'll give this to staff, and they can put Steve and Jim's names in for potential applicants.
Steve, they meet on a regular basis, like once a month or thereabouts. I'm not sure how often, but.
I'm not sure how often they happen.
All right.
Okay. Next item is an issue I wanted to talk about to the council. It's been brought to my attention that there are several times in the recent past that information has been taken out of an executive session, and there's a big concern with that. And I've had several council members talk to me about it, and there are concerns about it. One item I know for sure that was taken out was the discussion of a dollar value on settlement discussions concerning litigation. These kind of things coming out of an executive session can cause the city some serious harm. Another one that I know of was a discussion about the city manager in Brighton and his past experiences, and the way it was worded was, "The word on the street is this." That particular statement came out of an executive session. I want to warn all of the council members to keep in mind that the stuff that happens in an executive session needs to remain in an executive session to protect the best interest of the city, especially when it pertains to personnel and litigation. And that's all I have to say about it, is just a heads up to all the council, so that it doesn't continue to happen. We get into discussions about economic development, things of that nature, where we're dealing with negotiations, and can cause a huge loss for our community, and I don't want to see that happen. Plus, there are strict rules governing executive sessions and the discussions therein. Next item is reports, unless council members have anything for administrative business at this time. Do you have something? Oh, yes, thank you for bringing that up. I do have concerns about the Bell Creek situation. It's been months, and I continue to get calls. I know we have several people signed up on a petition with concerns. If someone gets hurt over there, and we haven't taken any actions, I fear that that's going to lay heavy on this city if a pedestrian gets hit, or worse. So I would like to ask the council to give some direction to take care of the situation in a temporary manner while there is ongoing discussions with the outcome of the studies and future discussions. So if the council is prepared, I would ask if they have, would like to give direction to staff to take some action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I did have a chance to speak with Public Works Director Greg Clemens before the meeting and I think he might have an, an update for you on a temporary solution, something that we, we have not been discussing, at least within the last day or two, so.
Okay. Greg, how are you?
Nope, you shut yourself off. Hi, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As we've discussed previously, proactive actions taken to date include switching the existing flashing lights from only school times to all day during the daytime and changing those signs so that the, the signage is consistent. The other proactive action taken so far has been the enforcement program that the police department has set up and consist, and followed through on. We've looked at other ways to address the situation pending the study session with the city council on May 14th. And what we're proposing at this stage in that time period is to simulate what we're recommending as a, as a more permanent solution, given our discussion with those neighbors. The concern seemed to be in discussion with the neighbors, not only speeding and traffic control, that seemed to be almost secondary to pedestrian crossing. We have three or four blocks of distance there without, that you would have to go down to a protected crossing to get to. And everybody knows that people will cross where it's comfortable and that's usually the most direct route. So pedestrian crossing became a focus and so we're looking at a median type treatment that provides some protection for pedestrian crossing. So what we would propose in the meantime to simulate that is a series of barricades lighted that would be set up to simulate the, the median crossing. There would have to be some restricted parking on the school side for this also, that would also be part of the permanent plan. And so we're, we're attempting to get that set up by, say, Wednesday or so this week. And that would give a couple of weeks, two and a half weeks to see how it would work generally if it was to be constructed permanently. There is a, a cost to that project, so that would give us a, a chance to see it before the expenditure would be made. Questions on that?
Let me see what we got here. Mr. Douglas, do you have a question? Your light's on? Okay, Councilwoman Carson.
Okay. I'm not so sure it's a question as a directive, but I'm ready to go in and put some stop signs in. It, it was a community that was built for walkability. I try to drive through there not to increase the traffic flow, but so that I can see firsthand what's going on. I'm not sure if I've ever been in there that I haven't witnessed speeding. Sometimes it, it's at a much greater speed, but, but there is a problem over there. And, and as the mayor has addressed, how liable are we if somebody does get hurt? School gets out here in just a few weeks, I think, third week of May, maybe, something like that. And, you know, it was a community belt for, for, like I said, for children to be able to go to the community parks and this and that. So I, I think it's been, to me, it's just taken longer than what it should have. And, and I do know, as the mayor has, has said, that the citizens, when they speak to me, seem to be quite impatient. And, and I, and I agree, I do think they need a lot more crossings over there.
A lot more what? Excuse me?
Pedestrian crossings.
Yes, that's, that seemed to be their bigger concern. I would ask the council, the stop sign idea is not a very good one. We can explain that in more detail, but it would impact parking and how you set it up and how the various driveways come together. There's not a good place to put stop signs. So that was one of the considerations that was included in the options that we discussed. And it's really not the best solution. That's why we're trying to come up with something that addresses not only the perceived speeding, but also the pedestrian crossing aspect.
Mr. Bullock?
Um, I, I'm trying to perceive your ideal, but I don't, I really don't get it. I understand it's going to set up more crosswalks, but where? And I guess I just don't have a visual on it, so I don't really understand exactly where it's going to be set up at. Is there?
If you can visualize that street.
Right.
Right adjacent to the school, there's a couple of streets that intersect in a T fashion from the west, from the east to the west. At the one that's furthest east, there would be a, a median island that would be in the center of the street and it would have a at-surface crossing in it. This would be curb and gutter essentially with visuals so they could see it at night and that sort of thing. In that way, it would reduce the width of the lanes, which gives you the perception as you're driving that you need to slow down as well as to show the pedestrians where they should be crossing. There'd be some protection with the flashing lights and that sort of thing.
Okay. Is Greg trying to bring up Google Earth on that site? Okay.
And I'm sorry, Greg, you said the, at what point is the crossing? On the south end of that school property?
Excuse me, sir?
You said south end or north end of the school property? I'm sorry.
As I recall, Darren, where's, it'd be at that 106th Drive, I think is.
Okay.
And this median would be parallel with Bell Creek Boulevard. And that's where the, the restricted parking there would also be located.
All right, so 106th Drive, okay. So.
So pedestrians could either go to this location or to the stop sign at 177th Avenue. It'd give them an option there.
Mr. McAdonie?
Just to pick up on Mr. Bullock's question, I guess just trying to visualize, you're talking about using parking, or using barricades to help essentially prototype this. Are we talking about sort of a, I guess a small island, sort of a couple barricades like this and a couple barricades like this with a place to walk between them so that you create sort of a, an island that causes them to slow down? Kind, I, I think about the, the two different traffic controls on Heartland Drive in Reunion where you've got sort of, again, if you go slow, you realize you can drive right through it without touching, but at speed, it seems like you've got a slow way down and snake through it. Is that the kind of?
That's the idea, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, not a complete circle, but it's a median. And it'd be just at that intersection rather than, one of the other options was to carry the median clear through the, the whole length there which would disrupt any parking on that west side. So it's a, it's got an intended purpose of traffic calming and the pedestrian crossing.
Mr. Douglas?
I'm not sure how this would work out though, on the intersection of Bell Creek and east 107th Avenue. Now, we couldn't put a roundabout in there, could we? It's too, too small.
Well, that's, that's completely protected with stop signs at that location, so that's not really the location of the problem. What they're complaining about is south of that to the bridge. That length of street through that section.
Right, because I know there's a roundabout down the bottom, right? As you go south, there's a roundabout down there.
Yeah, you can see the bridge there.
Yeah, that's a choke down also.
So they get this.
Roundabout there.
Roundabout there.
Right.
The bridge chokes down. And then it, that bridge north to the stop sign is the concern.
What about a speed bump before the choke down and then one after? Would that help there as well? I mean, any kind of obstacle that would slow them down in those times?
Those are options that we've addressed and we can look at. There's combinations that can be addressed. We need to talk to the council about various trade-offs. There's pros and cons on each of those ideas.
Because I've been over there several times since January for different things for my daughter and most of the things occur between starting time around 5:00, 5:30. And you got all the people out there who use the rec center and they were running the park, running all over the place and, and exercising and, and there was quite a few people. But there was a lot of speeders there at the same time, so it's just not in the morning or afternoon. It's, it's a lot that people speed through there. So there, it, it is something we really need to, not only address, but get something solved sooner than later because it's just going to end up someone getting, getting hurt.
That's part of the challenge, that, that street is now carrying about 3,500 vehicles a day, so it's a collector street. At the same time, it serves a, a neighborhood, residential neighborhood and, and the school and the playground, so. It's a, it's a challenge.
Mr. Bullock?
I understand that you said that a stop, the three-way stop is not a good idea. But I, at 106th Drive and Bell Creek, why is a three-way stop not a good idea there? It stops them there and then they have to stop again at the four-way stop and the choke down's right after that. That automatically is going to slow down the traffic and I see garages in the back and everything. For a temporary solution, why is that ideal not good?
I'll ask Darren if she, go ahead, Darren.
Situation with, with stop signs is that, that there's warrants that have to be met and we don't have any of the warrants. When you, when you just put up stop signs randomly, people tend to ignore them after a period of time when they, they figure out that there's nothing really going on in those locations. So you actually set up a, a false sense of security for somebody who's, who's a pedestrian in those locations. And so we try to limit what we do with stop signs. And that's why we're, we're really focused on this median island setup. You end up with a refuge in the middle of the road where somebody only has to really look out for themselves on crossing one section at a time. We're also narrowing up everything so that the, the lane width is going to be tighter so that people are going to have to slow down to get through those anyway, much like Councilman McAdonie mentioned with Heartland Drive and the chicane and some of the other traffic calming features that we use on collector streets.
Can you, can you explain the, that particular location in relation to that access to the parking lot and the parking generally?
What we've got is, is we've got 106th Drive sitting right here. Then we've got the driveway to the school right here. It's about halfway in between the two streets. And 106th Avenue is down here to the south. We've got too many intersections stacked up here in the same location and so what, what you end up happening is, is people stop to make left turns and then left turns out from various locations which causes a lot of congestion and can lead to more accidents just by itself with that, that congestion and every, all the activities that's going on in those locations. So that's why, that's another reason why stop signs in this section aren't, aren't a good idea. We did try when the school was, was being built to get this access, put it in a location where we could have a better situation, but that wasn't something we could work out with the school.
Okay. Now where's the choke down going, I mean, where is this median going to be exactly? Because with what you just said, I need to know where it is because something just then didn't make sense. But where is it going to be?
We're going to have one island here on the north side of 106th Drive and one island here on the south side of 106th Drive. And the crossing will be built into the, the one on the north side.
Okay.
One of the other situations with how we work out things in here, we've got parking built into the side of the street here on the east side. And so when, when we start talking about so many things, you got to be very careful about where you put them because you're talking about taking out parking that's really tight directly in front of those houses, but they're in location, and it's in a location where you wouldn't want to take traffic out too. So it, it just gets really complicated when you're dealing with the way this parking is set up in here.
When are they going to be installed? I mean, can we count on this by the end of the week?
That's what we're shooting for.
Okay, because then it is, it'd give us enough time with the residents there to, before June to see just how it's worked with, before school lets out. And then we'll have a good study from you and from the residents on what is their aspect of it and how it's worked for them.
That's the idea.
And we do have a study session coming up on this, correct, on the 15th?
May 14th is the scheduled date.
So it will be in at least two weeks before that study session?
That's the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McAdonie?
Mr. Bullock covered my questions.
Okay. My comments would be this. I, I think that the islands will create as big a problem or more of a problem than the stop signs. And when it comes to MUTCD and warranting, the signal at the end of that street wasn't warranted either. I'm looking from a safety perspective, after talking with the residents. I am the one who was given the, the signatures of the residents in that area. I know their number one preference would be stop signs, number two preference would be a speed hump. And talking about the city budget and dollars, the islands would be a much greater cost. So I am, I'm still a fan of the stop signs on a temporary basis until we get more information. Mr. Douglas?
Oh, it wasn't on this subject. Sound different.
Okay. Mr. McAdonie?
I mean, I guess we've, we've all been asking for something to happen. And so we've got staff that's before us. They have an idea they can implement. It's little to no cost. We, we have a study session that's planned for this. Let's let the proposed solution go in as a prototype. Let's see what happens in two weeks and we can argue it at that point, I guess, based on what the actual impacts are and the actual resident feedback at that point. I mean, I think we can all kind of create a mental picture of what the impact of any one measure might be, but it's always, you know, the proof is always in the pudding or when the rubber meets the road. So if there's an opportunity to, to do something, which is what we've been asking for, I mean, it seems like that's the, the way to go. And if it proves out to not be worth it, then certainly we don't expend dollars beyond that to, to put in a permanent solution of that type, then we look at something else.
I wouldn't disagree. I think personally, this has taken a lot longer than it should have for a temporary solution. We, several months ago, asked and directed staff to do something in an emergency mode to try to take care of the problem. And I guess, because I'm getting phone calls a lot, I'm getting a lot of pressure, I'm a little frustrated that there hasn't been anything, I, I mean, park a plow truck in the middle of the road so people have to slow down, I don't care, but do something in an emergency fashion. So I'm frustrated with the time that it's taken and with the interaction with the residents. They have explained to me that they're not happy on the median or speed table scenario. With that said, if we put up these temporary barricades, I, I worry that it's going to cause more problems with the neighborhood, but. But, uh, uh, anything right now, to me, is better than nothing, uh, to show that we're making some attempts. However, I think, uh, I think we're, we're too late in the process, um, for, for getting the emergency piece in, and the residents are already on edge. So, uh, those are my opinions, and I, I still would prefer the stop signs, but that's just me.
Counsel done with the discussion? We'll move on. Thank you. Mr. Douglas, you have, uh-
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, first one is, what date has the state of the city been moved to since it was, was it been, um, next week?
Um, that's been, uh, delayed indefinitely, pending some additional discussion by councils to set a new date.
All right, thank you. And the other thing is, um, last week on, uh, Resolution 2012-17, um, we were having problems with the buttons last week and, and all, and I want the record to reflect that I said nay, not yea. And I spoke to, um, Laura after the meeting last weekend, and the mayor, just trying to figure out how, like, what could bring this up, so I'm bringing them counsel administration.
Um, Jim, let me handle that one. Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, um, because the record reflects, number, first of all, uh, to the council, if anytime, uh, you hear me say that the voice vote, all affirmative, let the record reflect, it's, it's been approved unanimously, you have to stop things then and say, "I wanna vote, I voted no, change the, the, so the record reflects that I voted no." Needs to be changed then. Now, what's happened is that meeting was closed, and that vote is part of the record, and it shows, and, and I mentioned that it was all in favor, that, you know, that, that it was unanimous. Now, the question comes, and it's to Bob, to change a vote on a previous council meeting, I believe that there would have to be a motion, a second, to reconsider that particular item, and it would have to be revoted on, would it not?
That would be the only way to go back and get a different vote on it, but that would take a vote of, by a majority of the council to reconsider it. Maybe, uh, a more practical solution from, uh, Councilman Douglas' point of view is just let the record reflect on his comments tonight that he intended to vote, was it, you, you intended to vote no, and the vote came out yes, is that right?
No, I didn't say yes, I said nay, but, um, we were having issues last week with it.
Okay. Well, my suggestion is you can't go back and change the record.
Correct.
Unless you have a motion to reconsider, and then the whole council would vote on it, majority vote, then you reconsider, then it's, the issue's wide open again.
Correct.
But my suggestion was, is that, um, the note, the minutes for tonight's meeting simply reflect, if this is true, that Councilman Douglas intended to vote no on that resolution, and so be it. I mean, that reflects your intent, even though the, the minutes show that you voted yes, it's not a revote, don't misunderstand me, but it's just expressing your intent that it was an inadvertent, uh, vote the way it was announced.
Okay, I would, I would say, please, please tell me if I didn't hear, or if the city clerk didn't hear what your vote is. Please make knowledge that you voted one way or the other. Um, if you are, uh, voting a different way than what the rest of the council, if everybody says aye, and then there's no nay afterwards, and I don't hear it, and, and it goes, it goes forward as, as a all-unanimous vote, you have to get my attention at the time, so that we don't end up with a conflict. Mr. Douglas, does this take care of your issue, or do you want to have this brought up for reconsideration?
That takes care of my issue.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, then we'll move forward. But, yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Carson?
Uh, not to be the, uh, person who's going to be negative about this, but I, I am not in agreement with that. We sat up here, and this is, this is city business that is taking place. Um, we've all, we're experiencing the problems with the buttons. Um, I do know a few years back, my vote was not heard. Um, I made sure through that meeting that the mayor that was sitting there at that time, uh, realized that is not how I voted. I have not had a problem with, when you take this seat, if you're not in agree, if something is wrong, then you need to stop it then. Uh, the reason I am protesting this is because any one of us could come back then any week and say, you know, I, my button was wrong, you didn't hear me correctly, um, because you've gone home and had a week to, uh, maybe reflect on that vote or whatever, so then you're gonna get to come in here and say, "Well, I want it on record that I had said nay instead of yea." No, you have to do it then, because this is just the proper way to do business. We don't get to come back in and do it that way. So I don't even want the record to reflect that.
Don't misunderstand me. I mean, that vote stands, if it were a five-to-four vote, as an example, the next week you can't go back and change your vote to make it a different result. That, that vote stands, it, was it nine of us, nine people here?
Right.
Whatever it was, nine, zero, that's the way the vote stands. All I'm trying to do is accommodate Councilman Douglas, and if he wants to say he intended to vote no, so be it, but his vote is still yes.
Well, it kinda puts the blame on the mayor, almost, um, that he didn't hear correctly. I, I just, I just believe that if you, as an adult and as an elected person, if you don't take care of the problem at the time the problem arises, then, then it's time to move on.
Okay. Mr. McAdonie?
Just to follow on to, uh, Councilwoman Carson's comments, we have a mechanism called a roll-call vote, and I think at any point we can call for a roll-call vote, and so if at ever, there is a concern of not being heard, insert your comments, make the mayor, make your wishes known to the mayor, request a roll-call vote, and that's a tool to be used in specific instances where you wanna be on record to have a dissenting vote or a pro vote. So, I, I mean, I think Ms. Carson makes a great point. Business happens in real time. We don't get do-overs, we don't get replays, it's not pro sports, it's city council, and we show up on Monday night, we make hard decisions, and sometimes they're, they suck to live with, and other times they, they don't. And so we've gotta use the tools around us. This is not the first time that we've had a, a discussion of this nature about trying to do something different or change of mind after a decision's been made. So I, yeah, I would, I would say the, the, the tools are available, take advantage of them, or, you know, or not.
Mr. Douglas?
Uh, just on the comment there, Ms. Carson, um, I did say something, uh, after council meeting, uh, to Ms. Laura Bauer and, and the mayor, I didn't think about this for a week. It wasn't, it wasn't that, it wasn't that at all. So let me just make sure that's correct.
Okay. Seeing no one else, um, Councilwoman Carson?
On a different subject.
Okay, on a different subject. Seeing no one else, I'll move forward with, uh, administrative council business. Councilwoman Carson?
Um, we do have a new council seated here, and the topic that you had brought up earlier, if it's possible to bring SIRSIA in, um, to walk council through that process and the understanding of the liabilities put on an individual council person when you don't stay with inside the realm, I think might be beneficial.
Would you like to, uh, make a motion, rec, giving staff direction to try to talk to SIRSIA about getting a program in here?
Uh, yeah, if there's any way possible, that, um, in the near future.
And we're talking about executive session?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think there's a problem with having Tammy Tenoy, who's the in-house council for SIRSIA, to come in and, and talk about that particular issue. I mean, we can certainly contact her and see what response we get, if the council wishes that.
Is that a motion to direct staff?
So, so, yeah, if, if that needs to be in the form of a motion, then I would like to direct staff to please move forward on bringing some, Tammy, I didn't catch her last name.
Tenoy.
Tenoy in, uh, to speak with council during an exec session.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moreno?
Wait, was that during an executive session?
Uh, would it be more proper for an exec session to do that?
It is legal advice, so it's, it's appropriate.
Yeah.
And then she'd be discussing the, the responsibilities of council members during an executive session and-
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and I have, uh, a motion by Councilwoman Carson, and just so the record will reflect, I'm gonna take the second from Mr. McAdonie, even though I was calling on Mr. Moreno. That's no problem. We have a motion and a second to give direction to the staff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Staff has direction. Uh, Mr. Bullock, do you have something for administrative council business?
I don't know if this is for administrative council business or if it's for reports. It, um, echoes what, um, a miss, uh, um, what Carolyn said earlier about Arbor Day and the council being invited to plant flowers along the, uh, our wetlands, uh, our, I would like to see as many people from council join me as possible, and, because, um, you only get a one time to plant a tree, unless you get two or three or four times. And I would echo that and appreciate all the council participation that, um, can take place, because I will not be able to make that event. I have a hunting trip planned with my son, so I will not be here at that time of day on Saturday. So I would ask that the council try to, to, to cover that and get as much participation there as possible. Is there any further administrative council business? Seeing none, I'll move into reports.
Uh, I had a meeting with the consulate general of Mexico for Colorado, uh, meeting went very well. Um, Mizrym and, uh, city manager were also present. Uh, me and Dominic attended Rotary on Wednesday. Uh, myself, um, Mr. Teeter, and Mr. Bullock attended the United Power Annual Meeting. Um, then on Thursday, we had Commerce City-Denver City Council Joint Meeting, which was the, to my knowledge, the first time Commerce City's ever met in whole with, uh, all of Denver City Council and the mayor, and, uh, with all of our city council and the mayor, and talked about relationships and how we can work together on projects that affect both communities. I think it went rather well. Oh, yeah, yeah. And, and we hosted. Denver came out here, thank you, Mr. Bullock. Denver came to Commerce City, um, to have that, that meeting. We also attended the Metro, and there were several, several of the council, most of the council, I think, was there, Metro North Denver Development, Metro North Chamber of Commerce Development Breakfast, and the topic was fracking. I thought that, uh, the information that, that was received was, was fair and, uh, informative. We also had the I-HAD with, uh, Jim and, uh, members of the Economic Development Department. We had the planning meeting for the ICSC, uh, trip, and we're gonna have, uh, at least one more of those meetings, um, to talk about the plan of action while we're out there, uh, trying to get interest for Commerce City. And then, uh, lastly, was the groundbreaking for the new administrative building for South Adams Water and Sanitation, and I do recall seeing, uh, Mr. Bullock, Mr. Teeter, um, Councilwoman Elliott. Uh, hopefully I didn't miss anybody. Were you there, Steve? Mr. Douglas. Um, so we had a good showing at that groundbreaking. I did show up a few minutes late, but, uh, Mr. Teeter assured me that they had me covered for the five minutes that I was late. So, uh, that's, that's it for the reports, unless someone would like to add on to what I have put together. Mr. Moreno?
Just one more item. Um, on, on Sunday for Earth Day, uh, the World Mission Society Church of God, um, did a cleanup along Sand Creek, um, and it was wonderful. They had more than a hundred folks out there, um, removing old tires and old logs and all kinds of stuff, and it was really a, a, a great project. Um, I was fortunate enough to, to get out there for a little bit and help clean up, um, but wanted to just thank them for, for their efforts. Staff was there to assist them as well from Parks and Recs, so I wanna thank staff for that as well.
And, uh, I wanna thank the staff that put together the meeting with Denver. Um, I think it went exceptionally well, and the, the staff really did a lot. Um, Carolyn with the Parks Department, I know Michelle Rogers, um, had a, had a large impact on how that went over, and, uh, the folks up at, uh, the Bison Grill, um, and anybody else from staff that was involved, uh, thank you for making that such a good meeting. Mr. Bullock, you have something?
Yes. On Saturday, the 21st, um, the Volunteers for the Friends of the Wildlife Refugees, and it's not just, um, Rocky Mountain Arsenal, it's Two Ponds and all the other refuges in the metro area, had their volunteer recognition dinner, uh, luncheon, out here at, um, the Rocky Mountain Refuge, uh, in Building 129, and we had a keynote speaker, was a lady that talked about the different, uh, plants and seeds that are indigenous to Catarata and why different plants, uh, they try to keep them from here because they come in and completely overwhelm our plants. And, uh, I was one of the speakers for, uh, the city of Commerce City and the Friends of the Wildlife Refugees. So, uh, they, uh, really, we really appreciate the work that the volunteers do out there. They've given over nine thousand hours in this past year, and that's money saved by all the refuges.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none?
Oh, shed a couple items.
Yeah, that's fine. I didn't wanna forget you guys in your reports. Acting Deputy City Manager at the time being.
Yes, Mr. McBroom sends his apologies. He's quite ill today, so, uh, hopefully I filled in okay for him. A couple items. Uh, first of all, uh, you already alluded to it when CDOT was here tonight. Uh, May 2nd, uh, big night for Commerce City. Uh, we have the NIOP Challenge, which will be, uh, at 5:00 at the Hyatt Regency Denver Convention Center. I believe you received an email from Julie Jacoby earlier today, uh, either RSVP to her or to Lisa Gallegos. Uh, the second thing that night is the Dr. Cog Awards Event. Uh, we received the Gold Award for our Community Outreach Public Education Campaign for the Mile High Greyhound Park. So, uh, that event is at 6:00, uh, and that's at the Hot Colorado History Center. So, uh, if you wanna try to run back and forth, you, you could try, um, but, you know, let us know which ones you're planning on attending, and we'll, we'll make sure the seats are filled. Um, just a reminder, no meeting next week, uh, and I know you already taken action to have your next meeting on May 7th start at, at 5:30. I just wanted to point out one other item in the, in the report from the city manager's office, and it was regarding a proactive enforcement memo. Uh, we are prepared to come back with a, a study session if you're, if you're so inclined, but essentially it is outlining some of the, uh, improvements we're making to neighborhood services going into the summer season, and, uh, taking a little more proactive approach, uh, to reaching out to our citizens. Uh, I try to look at it as a kindler, gentler approach, where we can, uh, try to get compliance as opposed to enforcement and fines. And so, uh, take a look at that. Let me know if you have any questions, and, and Chris Kramer's also well-versed, as well as Dave Lutter on that project. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
Nothing more.
If there be no further business to come before the City Council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned.